All right, call the meeting to order at six thirty-two. Please stand for the Pledge of Legions.
The Pledge of Legions is the symbol of the United States of America and the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Berman?
Here.
Trustee Bluthart?
Here.
Trustee McNeil is absent. Trustee Pierce?
Present.
Trustee Masonic?
Here.
Trustee Peterson?
Present.
Mayor Gardner?
Present. All right, may I all report? First off, couple of things. It is Passover week, April twenty-second through the thirtieth. It is also Administrative Assistance Day, so I apologize to both of mine that I forgot. And I'll make it up to you, I promise. We have a couple acknowledgements for some wrestling and a skating champion. So the first person we have here tonight is Quinton McCormick. He is the synchronized skating champion, I believe. Where is he at? All right, I think I met your, is there your grandfather? Yep, is he here? Oh, hey, John, how are you? Good to see you. All right, so Quinton is a junior at Antioch High School. This incredible kid skated on the Team's Elite Junior Team for the twenty-three twenty-four season. Team's Elite is a synchronized figure skating club out of Northbrook, Illinois. The season started out with a competition in California where the team took second place. Then the team competed in Boston where they took first place, which earned them Team USA status. The ranking took them to Budapest where they took first place, and then to Poland where they took first place again. And not only did they win first place, they earned the highest score ever for a junior short program. Now, next stop was Las Vegas for the USA National Championship, where for the first time, Team Elite won the Junior National Gold Medal. Winning Nationals earned them the top seat for the Team USA World Championship at Switzerland, and Team Elite finished fourth in the world. This amazing athlete puts in countless hours a week training, and his hard work has absolutely paid off, so let's give him a round of applause. All right, so you're not off the hook yet, so can you come up to the podium real quick? So congratulations. What's the next, what's the next stop? What's the next step? Like, is this Olympics in the future? What's the next step in the process?
I'm still trying to graduate high school.
First things first, yep.
I mean, I want to continue skating. I don't know where that will go, but I love it, and it's my dream.
All right, very good. Yeah, because it looks like you have to balance a lot of travel with the schoolwork, so congratulations. All right, so we have a plaque that's here for you that you can keep and come up here, and again, I want to congratulate you from the village of Antioch on your hard work and your accomplishments. All right, congrats.
Congrats.
Congratulations.
It's my pockets. All right.
Oh, my gosh.
Next, we have a, yeah. All right, next, we have two wrestling champions. First is Grady Glawaki, which is the Boys Novice Twenty Twenty-four State Champion at sixty-nine pounds. There he is back there. He received the first place at the USA Wrestling Winter Nationals, also first place at the Twenty Twenty-four St. Charles Battle for the Shield, fifth place in the Twenty Twenty-four USA Wrestling Kids Fork Style Nationals, and was an All-American, and fourth place at the Twenty Twenty-four USA Wrestling Preseason Nationals, All-American. Congratulations. And you get to come up here, we have a plaque. Want to tell us about yourself on the microphone? How long you been wrestling?
I've been doing it for like seven, eight years.
Wow, that's like your whole life. How old are you now? How old are you?
I'm twelve.
All right, well, congratulations, and then I assume you're gonna keep doing this. What grade, what grade is that?
Sixth.
Sixth grade, and then, all right, well, we look forward to you coming back here. We had the high school team a couple of times. They've done pretty good, so hope you keep that going. Here's your plaque. All right, we also have Leela Carson. Did I pronounce that right? Lila, Lila Carson, IKWF Girls Intermediate State Champion at sixty-seven pounds. She is also with the Antioch Predators. She was a Twenty Twenty-four IKWF State Champion, Girls Intermediate at sixty-seven pounds. She was the third place at the Twenty Twenty-four Tulsa Nationals, first place Twenty Twenty-four St. Charles Battle for the Shield, first place Twenty Twenty-four Illinois Kid Future Finalist, and Illinois first place Twenty Twenty-four Girls Rule Rumble. I agree. Congratulations. Come up here and why you tell us a little bit about yourself. Yeah.
Sixty-nine to sixty-seven pounder.
All right, so tell us a little bit about yourself. What, where do you go to school?
Oakland Elementary.
All right, what grade are you in?
Fifth.
Fifth grade, and how long have you been wrestling?
Uh, since I was four.
All right, so a long time. You guys know each other?
Yeah.
All right, so I, I hope you guys, does Antioch have a girls' team now?
They do. They wrestle in high school.
Yeah, I know they have a high school girls wrestling, and they separate. All right, well, congratulations, and I hope you keep this up, and we look forward to seeing you back here next year, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, congratulations. Thanks. All right, do we have anyone signed up on the citizens wishing to address the board?
No.
I don't see any.
Yeah. If you guys also, at this point, feel free, you don't have to sit through the rest of the meeting. Hey, tell them, tell them your parents you wanted to go to Dairy Queen. How about that? All right. Uh-huh, thank you.
Can you see out of here, Ben?
Yeah, it's over.
Bye-bye.
All right, we have four items on the consent agenda. Do you have any requests to remove any of those items from the consent agenda?
Everything.
Move everything. All right, roll call, please. Well, I'm sorry, we have motion in a second.
Don't move.
Motion, trustee Bluthart, second trustee Berman, roll call, please.
Berman?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Pierce?
Aye.
Masonic? Peterson?
Yes.
All right, on to the regular business. Item number five is consideration, an approval of payments of accounts payable as prepared by staff in the amount of three hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-nine cents. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
Motion, trustee Peterson, second trustee Berman, roll call, please.
Berman?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Pierce?
Aye.
Masonic? Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Next is consideration and approval of the operating budget for the fiscal year May first, twenty twenty-four to April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion and a second?
Don't move.
Motion, trustee Peterson?
Second.
Second trustee Luther. Roll call, please.
I just have a question. Okay, discussion.
I mean, okay, I mean, we'll discuss it, but usually it's a cow item, but let's go, we'll move forward with this.
I, I just want Dennis, there's, there's some people in the audience today that are just concerned about the road.
Sure.
Roads for the Woods of Antioch.
Okay.
And Dennis was gonna explain what's going on.
Okay.
Sure, thank you and good evening. Yes, back in November, I think we had a meeting that basically discussed some of the items. Direction that I was, under the assumption, was the million-dollar road program that we typically have, basically splitting that and taking six hundred thousand for our normal, which is the MFP funds, and then taking the four hundred thousand and focusing it towards the Woods of Antioch. Along with that assumption was that we were going to fully remove the concrete and put back asphalt, and therefore eliminating the concrete roads within the village, because those are the only ones.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions on the budget? Budget, anybody?
No.
Only once. All right.
Give a brief rundown of what the differences between draft one, two, and three is, because we got draft three today on.
Sure, I thi- I think the simplest way is to go from draft two to three. Draft two was the last draft that the board had the opportunity to view at the Cow and discuss. Based on some discussions with the mayor, and then some discussions with some of the trustees and feedback, got the consensus, or at least the vibe, I should say, that the full board was not in full support of earmarking the cannabis revenues specifically to park improvements. So through working with Zeta, that fund was, or that, those revenues were moved out of the capital budget into the operating budget, but designated for community improvements. Allows a little bit more flexibility for us to decide how we need to use those funds to benefit the community. Certainly, I think the intent is still to continue to use those funds to make park improvements, but it allows a little bit more flexibility in how we do that. With where it was previously earmarked, it was specifically, would have been specifically required for physical improvements to the parks. This way, we can use it if there's maintenance that are needed in specific parks, if there is equipment that we need to replace in specific parks that we don't have funds allocated currently. If at some point we decide we need additional staff to assist with the maintenance of the parks, it could be used for those type of things. So it just allows a little bit more flexibility, and of course, a- as things go, sometimes emergencies come up where we have to look for revenues. It would allow that flexibility as necessary too, but I think at this point, unless we get other direction from the board, we're still lea- moving towards using those funds to help benefit our parklands, but it allows a little bit more flexibility should some other need arise. The other change that was made was the easement. Funds were, that were specifically earmarked for Grim Road easement acquisitions. Those were removed and shipped elsewhere in the budget to allow some additional flexibility with those funds as well.
So just a quick question on the cannabis news, the community improvements. If we, if the board decided that the sidewalks downtown needed additional work, that would be a community improvement? Or if we decide we need new signs coming in the village, that'd be a community improvement? But we're allowing us to use it for anything we want to use it for, instead of specifically for the park?
Yes, yes. Could be used up the direction of the work.
Can I clarify something too? So one of the things that concerned me with the Parks Master Plan and the Parks was that we are going to expend funds for the parks, but what I haven't seen yet is a maintenance plan for those. So I just want to make sure that if we're, when we're using those, that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, that if it's, needs to be used for park maintenance, or, you know, whether it be painting fences or landscaping, or whatever we need, that that would qualify, so that wasn't just as would be, say, park equipment, so to speak. Does that make sense? So we could work with Public Works and the Parks Department to have a maintenance plan for our parks as we're spending large sums of money on the parks.
Right. One, one area I think of focus that we would hope to use these funds for is the reimagining and redevelopment towards our, our long-term plan of Centennial Park. As you know, that, that park has long outlived its anticipated lifespan with the current equipment that's in there now. With it being such a large parcel, it's likely gonna require us to engage some expertise to help us redesign and reimagine what that park should be. We're also moving in the direction of trying to secure an OSLAD grant for up to six hundred thousand dollars, which would be a fifty-fifty matching grant to help fund those improvements. And like anything else in life, nothing comes free, and there's gonna be costs associated with that, that master plan for Centennial Park along with grant application processes, so that cannabis revenue would help fund those processes as well.
So you mentioned in there a hundred point five thousand dollars. Is that what we're setting aside for the community improvements? Or is there additional dollars that we're using for the parks or?
There, there are some additional dollars that are earmarked for park improvements. Specifically, there were some funds that were set aside for pickleball courts.
Correct, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yes.
Three hundred and fifty for pickleball and twenty thousand for the sawmill. And we know one border, the sawmill, has ten thousand.
Yes, well, and theoretically with the shift of that hundred and twenty-five thousand out of the specific capital fund, those cannabis revenues could also be utilized to add additional improvements to the sawmill if they're needed. Just, it allows more flexibility, and again, happy to take steers from the board on how they'd like to see those prioritized, but by no means to, you know, pull a fast one or shift the funds outside of what the board believes that they should be used by. That's why I'm telling you this, trying to be transparent with you, let you know where it went and what our intended purpose is, but just in a move to try to allow us more flexibility with those monies.
So can we add to the quarterly meeting a discussion on the priority of the funds? Because we're at a point where we need to really start ramping up on the park. I know that we are. There's, there's much more money in here for capital improvements than there was before.
Sure.
Yes.
Yep, no, that for sure can be discussed on that, that day. Any other questions about the budget numbers? All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Berman?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Pierce?
Aye.
Masonic?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing the village administrator to equip two Twenty Twenty-four police vehicles, Dodge Durango Police Pursuit. Authorization includes the cost to purchase the vehicles, including the extended warranties, rustproofing from Sunnyside Company, in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, nine eighty-five, the cost to purchase and install the emergency equipment from Ultra Strobe, in the amount of twenty-six, three eighty-six, the cost for install, installation of police markings and graphics from EBY Graphics in the amount of three thousand, with the total cost being approximately a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three seventy-one. This is resolution number twenty-four dash thirty-two. Do I have a motion and a second? Motion, trustee Masonic? Second trustee Berman, roll call, please.
Berman?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Pierce?
Aye.
Masonic?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Is this next item discussed at the, yeah? Okay. Next item is consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing change orders and costs associated with the open space development at Main Street and Orchard Street related to modifications to the cafe building. The needed modifications include the purchase and installation of a stainless steel countertop and nano wall headers in the amount of thirteen thousand, four hundred and three dollars. Resolution number twenty-four dash thirty-three. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion, trustee Peterson?
Second.
Second trustee Luther. We didn't discuss this before, so if there's any questions about this item.
What is this?
Trustee Masonic?
This is a change order onto what, a nano wall?
Yes, so to, to refresh the board's memory, back in December, the board approved a change to the window opening, the nano wall on the cafe building. That was to accommodate the materials necessary for the window itself, the nano wall and the screening. It was made clear to us by Bowler at the time in the change order that that funded amount did not include the engineering and modifications to the structural supports necessary to accommodate the nano wall, as well as the change in the stainless steel countertop that would be necessary to fit the new opening. So that's what these new costs are for this evening is to improve the structural headers and supports necessary to support the nano wall, as well as the installation of a larger.
So we got a fifty thousand dollar window.
Previous change order was roughly twenty-seven thousand, and this one's thirteen-four, so your math is correct, sir.
So fifty thousand dollar window. Did, did the prior administrator know that this was coming prior?
I can't say specifically what he know. What I can tell you is that.
And he kept this from the board?
Well, I, 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 I'm not, I'm not a judge, but he's also, this is, you're saying, and he's, I know, I know, but you're asking him to say what somebody else knew, and I don't think he's.
Let me ask this question. We've got, I'll ask in a different manner. We've got the immediate income. We're asking for a window that exceeds any window within the village limits, probably a hundred mile limit. Fifty thousand dollar one, window. This project is so out of control. Okay, I avoid anything on this stupid splash pad that, that, that I know he knew stuff that he didn't tell the board, okay? This window, I'm gonna ask for an executive session, because he knew stuff he didn't tell the board.
Well, again.
So hold on.
Ed, 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 I don't know, I'm, I'm the chair of the meeting, Ed. Okay, Ed, Ed. I'm the chair of the meeting, Ed. All right, listen, we're not gonna make accusations. Somebody who's, yeah, you are, okay? Yes, Ed. All right, we could have executive session regarding this item, but we're not gonna make accusations about somebody that can't defend.
Hey, I'll ask to table the motion.
Okay, we could, and we, that, that's a valid motion.
Ask to table the motion until further investigation of was information of this, of, 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 did, what, what, I'll table the motion if there was prior knowledge of the expenditure prior to today's meeting from Mr., from the prior administrator.
So there's been a motion made and needs to be seconded. It is not debatable. So the motion is to table item Roman numeral seven. Roman numeral seven, item eight. Is there a second to that motion? There is no second. Motion's not perfected. All right, you may proceed. Any other questions on this item? Okay, roll call, please.
Berman?
No.
Luther?
Yes.
Pierce?
Aye.
Masonic?
No.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Gardner?
Yes. Four voting yes, motion carries. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, next item on the agenda is consideration and approval, authorizing the acting village administrator to sell Savage or otherwise dispose of equipment. Ordinance number twenty-four dash four dash twenty-six. Do I have a motion and a second, waiving the second reading?
So moved.
Motion, trustee Peterson?
Second.
Second trustee Berman, roll call, please.
Berman?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yeah.
Masonic?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Next item is administrators' reports.
So Mayor, we meet into the first punch. I just wanted to take a moment to recognize all of our organization's administrative support staff. They're the backbone of what many of us do, and we would not see the successes without the hard work and dedication that they put into helping us do our job. So a thank you to all of them. Just wanted to update the board a little bit on some ongoing discussions in regards to our downtown streetscape. We've made some internal changes in hopes to improve our internal efficiencies. Where we're bringing in all of our stakeholders for discussions on projects early on, rather than letting things get a little too far down the sidewalk, so to speak. No pun intended, before we start seeking input of others. We hope that this will allow all impacted departments to weigh in early and provide their input to potential challenges and obstacles that we may face. The new approach has begun being implemented. They explore some phased improvements to the downtown streetscape. Both community development, business development, the administration, public works, and the mayor have all met to identify these priorities, and we hope that it'll bring a little bit smoother process to helping make improvements in our community. The performance assessment project that I spoke of last meeting to the board, as you know, we recently rolled out a new employee assessment instrument that was created with input from all of our departments. The second phase of this project was the implementation of a new evaluation for directors' performance. And we're nearing the finish line on that project, and the final revisions are being completed on that instrument with input from all the directors. Were the ones that are being evaluated, so we felt it was important for them to have a say, we should, what they should be measured on. Want to let the board know there's been some changes in how we're conducting our staff meetings with directors and managers. For as long as I can remember, prior administrations have held weekly full staff meetings, which serve as the primary touch point between staff and the administrator. We recently transitioned those staff meetings to be bi-weekly, and then on those off weeks, we implemented one-on-one meetings with directors and managers. This week has been my second round of these one-on-ones with our staff, and I have found them to be very helpful and valuable, and I hope that our staff will agree. They've really helped improve our internal communications workflows. Happy to announce that as we kind of close the, the calendar or the fiscal year on this budget, we were in a position to be able to make a transfer into our emergency reserves. Zeta has completed a transfer of a half million dollars into our reserve funds, which brings it up to four million dollars, which is nearly a fifteen percent of our first reserve funds. That was a big accomplishment for us. I'd also kind of like to close that part with congratulating finance and thanking Zeta and her entire team on all their hard work in producing this budget, and they've held countless meetings with me and with the mayor and other members of the staff. And I know that they had several late nights. Zeta, a couple nights ago, spent working at home till about ten-thirty at night to make sure that the budget was in order, prepared to come before you tonight. So I'd just like to recognize her and her team for all the hard work they put into things. Block cameras, I know, is a frequent topic of conversation with our community. We've been waiting for them for a very long time. Happy to say that four of the five poles to support these block cameras have been installed in the community. We ran into a little bit of hiccup on the one that's gonna be located at Route fifty-nine in Bayview. The contractor came to install that, that post to find that the soils, that site were not suitable to support it. So we're working with them and IDOT to find an alternate site near to that area. Poles that we do currently have installed, we're told that the cameras will be mounted by technicians between April twenty-sixth and twenty-ninth, depending on the weather, and then we should be up and operational in two to three weeks. So we should be meeting our, our goal, go-live date of before summer. Couple of staff updates throughout the village, mainly the PD. We've recently hired two community service officers, part-time community service officer. One name is John Ponior. He usually comes to us as a retired paramedic, and there's Logan Lotterbach, who is a college student. Also want to look forward, know that we are currently in the process of conducting interviews for a new code enforcement inspector. Alex has agreed to allow me to share a little bit of information, so he joined our team about a year ago. Fortunately, he suffered a blood clot in his back. He's been being treated for that, and subsequent to that, he was recently diagnosed with thyroid cancer, so he doesn't feel that he's gonna be up to par to perform his duties. So he has graciously agreed to bow out, to move on to focus on his health, but he is gonna stay on board to help us train these new community service officers, as well as help identify the best successor for his position as well. So I think that speaks to his character and dedication for this community, so I'd just like to recognize him. And then lastly, the three newest police officer recruits are gonna be graduating from the academy this Friday, so they'll come back and they'll transition into a tall week field training program, so we're excited to have them all back. So a lot of, a lot of changes on the personnel front. With that, I close my report unless there's any questions.
Questions? Doing once, like twice? All right, thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you to Zeta for all the hard work and the whole staff for getting this done for us. All of you, thank you.
Thank you. And I want to say, I feel like it was done for the most part pretty early this year, so thank you. Next is the village clerks' reports.
It's your last chance to get items out to the curb before spring cleanup tomorrow. Last reminder.
And if they don't pick your stuff up, call Lori.
Already gone.
Oh, yeah.
All right, any trustee reports? Anything to report from the trustees? Trustee Pierce?
Yeah, I'd like to report on two items. This last weekend at, at the Piggly Wiggly, there was an essential donations event. Bill, Antioch Township trustee, Chris Shepherd, Antioch Township supervisor, Tom Chauncey, and myself kind of put it together because Antioch Traveling Closet was really low on essential items for people that aren't covered under any form of aid. This includes its feminine products, toilet paper, toothpaste, toothbrushes, any, anything that they, they, that are, it's essential for daily living and comfort. So we, we put that together, and I, I want to just thank the community. They brought out a whole bunch of stuff. The Piggly Wiggly put together a whole bunch of bags. I think we, they sold like fifty or sixty bags that are now stacked over at Antioch Traveling Closet. People like Sonny from the BP brought, brought by a check for two hundred dollars. The Antioch Lions donated a hundred and fifty dollars. So I just wanted to thank everybody for their, their, their kind donations and helping looking out for their fellow neighbors here in Antioch. The other, the other item I want to discuss real quickly is, at our recent park board meeting, there was a discussion on, on what a veteran was. And during that discussion, it was, to me, a whole group of veterans were, were eliminated from being veterans just, just because of what, how they served in the military, and I, I thought that was terribly wrong. So I just wanted to look up what the legal definition of a veteran is and put that in the record, so that we all know what it is. And, and it's under title thirty-eight of the U.S. Code. A veteran is defined as a person who served in the active military naval, air, or space service, and who was discharged or released, therefore, under conditions other than dishonorable. So if you served in the military, basically, you're a veteran. And there were comments made that only combat veterans were, were true veterans, members of the American Legion. Members of the American Legion weren't veterans, and I just thought that was terribly wrong that, that a member of our park board would say that. And I just want to encourage the whole board to to support what our true veterans are, and that's people who've served in the military and served our country. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Anyone want to follow that up? Any other trustee reports? Okay. Um, thank you. Uh, then I'll take, entertain a motion to adjourn the, uh, regular business meeting.
So, second.
Motion trustee Bluthart, second trustee Peterson, all in favor?
Hi.
Trustee Pierce?
Just wanted to confirm the executive session that's gonna be held after the committee of the whole.
Yeah, it won't be held now. If there's any executive session, it'll be held after the committee of the whole. Okay, so we'll, we'll ask again when we get to that point. Yep. Alright, um, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Hi.
Alright, any opposed? Alright, four in favor, one opposed. Motion meeting's adjourned at seven oh three. Uh, we will take a five-minute break.
I lost my head.
I wish I would have done.
Alright, call the meeting to order at seven thirteen. This is the committee of the whole meeting. Uh, roll call, please.
Trustee Berman?
Here.
Trustee Bluthart?
Here.
Trustee McNeil is absent. Trustee Pierce?
Present.
Trustee Masek?
Here.
Trustee Peterson?
Present.
Mayor Gartner?
Present. Um, no mayoral reports. I do have someone that signed up, I believe citizens wishing to address the board. So, um, trustee Peterson, will you pass me the, um, sign-up sheet?
Absolutely.
Alright, Madam Clerk, um, will, uh, read the, uh, ground rules for the public comment portion, and then, um, while you up here to speak.
Uh, the opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about the business of the board. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. The board strives to make the best decisions for the village, and public input is very helpful. The board must protect the civility and decorum of this meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board and the democratic process in your comments tonight. Please state your name and address your comments to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please be factual and courteous, and the board requests that you not make statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. To the extent multiple speakers are addressing a single issue, the mayor reserves the right to limit the number of speakers making public comment of repetitive nature and/or the time for public comment. Board does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment period. Evan Graham Murray?
Hello. Hi. Uh, so my name is, uh, Evan Graham Murray. I live actually not too far from here on, uh, Midnight Pass. Um, I'm here to speak on the solar farm. Um, my, my wife and I actually moved to the area very recently from, from Minnesota. Um, and one of the things that we really love about this area and the reason we decided to buy our first house in this area, um, that's captured actually so well by the signage, is the authentic by nature and all the green space and the dedication. Um, as was discussed in, in, in part earlier, uh, this evening to parks, to green space, and to nature. Um, and when I heard about the solar farm, I was absolutely thrilled that something like that would be, uh, coming to our community. In fact, I was so thrilled that I am uh, here before you. So, I, I strongly, uh, encourage, uh, the board to approve the solar farm. Um, I think it'd be a great thing for our community, be a great way, um, to demonstrate a commitment to nature and a commitment to, um, authenticity. There's nothing more authentic than natural renewable energy. Um, and that's it. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Um, next item on the agenda is item number one, approval of the April tenth, twenty-twenty-four committee, the whole meeting minutes as presented. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion trustee Bluthart, second trustee Berman, roll call, please.
Berman?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Pierce?
Present. I, did you forget who we were?
Masek?
Yeah.
Peterson?
Yes.
Alright, five voting yes, motion carries. Um, if there's no objection, I'm going to, no offense, I'm gonna move a couple of things around, so you have a couple of quick items, and I'll get those people out of the, uh, meeting if they want to leave. Um, so first, I would like to move items number four, five, six, and seven. Uh, next on the agenda, if there's no objection. And the first would be, um, Antioch Chamber of Commerce Plan for the Taste of Summer. I have, um, Director Barbara Port shared person to present that item.
Good evening. Um, I was asked to come back to the board with dates that we will be closing Skidmore and the north parking lot next to the Banshore, Banshell during the taste. I think you all have that in front of you. We normally close them on Monday of Taste Week, which would be July fifteenth. And then also, there was a question on what kind of entertainment are we gonna do this year, since we're not hosting a carnival? We're obviously having our headline bands, as we do every year. And this year, we're also incorporating a cheer day, working with cheerleaders from our community, both from Vikings and from the schools, to come out and do demonstrations, and also to do interactive cheer with the audience that's there. We thought that would be a fun thing to do. And then on Sunday of the taste, we're gonna do, um, Relay Race Sunday, working with Northbridge Church and a group they support, Shanging Abilities, to bring additional fun to our community. Also included, I didn't see it on the agenda, um, we submitted a special event liquor license on behalf of the Lodge of Antioch for Antioch's Taste of Summer.
That was approved in the consent agenda. So, that's already, that was approved in the fir-, I believe in the consent agenda, right? Lori, I re-, I saw it.
Number two, yeah.
In the earlier meeting, I think, um.
Okay, alright, I just didn't, didn't look through that. Thank you. So, that is all I have on the taste.
Sure. Alright, thank you. Any questions about the taste?
No.
Oh, I had one question. On the rain date, is that for any of the days that might get rained out, or is that just for?
We're just gonna pick one.
Okay, okay.
If we have more than one rainy date, we'll pick one of the bands best.
Alright, alright, thank you. Any other questions? Alright, uh, thank you. Next item is Antioch Chamber of Commerce Strut Your Mutt Dog Walk Event Details. Barbara's here again.
Um, Strut Your Mutt is an annual dog walk that's normally held in Libertyville. It is on behalf of Canines for Comfort. They provide comfort dogs to hospitals, police departments, other organizations. The woman who runs it lives in Antioch. So, we started talking, said, "Let's bring this to Antioch. Antioch loves dogs." So, we picked the date. I know there's two dates in front of you, but it is Sunday, September fifteenth would be our date. We've already reserved William's Park for this. And basically, it's a dog walk. It's a very casual dog walk. People come at different times, and then a pet expo. Um, I was asked by the park director to bring this before the board. That's why I'm here tonight. And then they would leisurely walk around town on sidewalks and have the proper items they are, need in case they're walking on sidewalks. So, are any questions from the board I can answer?
So, you're asking us to waive your fees, Ed?
Yes, please.
Yeah, sounds fun. Yeah.
It's a good cause.
Yeah.
Any question? Anything on the parks?
That's cute.
Everything good from the parks perspective on that?
Right, that is called the cat track, and that's a dog run. They did it last year in Antioch also.
Okay, yeah, as long as everybody works together on the coordination. So, we're not cannibalizing each other, that's.
Yeah, they're totally different entities.
Alright. Alright. Not, uh, have you heard the word cannibalize a lot this week?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah. Alright, yeah, any other discussion? Alright, thank you. I was very good for those. Thank you. Um, next item is a liquor license request for an expansion of the lodge. And we have Jimmy Donahoe here in person.
Uh, it's two.
Four forty of four forty-three.
Four forty-three?
Anything, board?
Four forty.
We got, uh, my event coordinator, Chris Larson, also with.
Thank you. So, as you see in the packet, they're requesting to, um, expand the lodge into the space that was, uh, formerly a cloper and lace boutique, um, and consolidate the liquor license under, um, one business address. So, I don't know if there's anything else to add on that, but that's in a nutshell, correct?
That's, that's basically as you can get. Obviously, I mean, we tried to run it out to a couple of different people, and it just has not worked out with the current, uh, you know, climate of Main Street and what you guys want there. So, you know, it already looks like the lodge on the outside, that space, so it just makes, makes total sense.
From a legal perspective, do I have to do anything for the liquor license with the addresses?
We're gonna approve it at the next meeting. Trustee Pierce?
So, if you're combining the two spaces together under one liquor license, you're not able to expand your gambling, are you?
No, sir.
Yeah. Any other questions or concerns about this?
I'd just like to know how, how to move forward.
Um, so I believe the liquor license will come up for approval at the vote for the next board meeting, which is in two weeks.
Okay.
Alright, so, start building away.
Alright.
Alright.
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, alright. Next one I'm moving up is, uh, fire district request for, uh, water fee waiver. I have Chief Coke here, fair hair, in person.
Jimmy, just go easy. Better wear the pants.
Chief, the floor is yours.
Hi, board. Heard you missed me. It's been about a month, so, before I came with my hands out. Um, currently, um, you know, our construction project is moving out, moving ahead fast and furious. Uh, we currently have a water line coming in off of Orchard, um, that feeds the service of just the daily service and the hose reels, and we actually have a hose fill line within the station itself. Um, because we're adding a sprinkler system, an expanded, uh, service system, uh, water usage. Um, we're bringing in new service in off of the Holbeck, uh, roadside. Uh, we've worked with the village, um, on those permits and that plan. What that leaves us with is one line coming in, uh, the current line coming in off of Orchard. And what we're looking to do is utilize that line, and we're asking you to allow us to utilize that line for a truck fill line. Currently, whenever we need to fill our pumpers, we have plenty of fire hydrants we can run to. Um, we also, the, the Public Works Department has been fantastic about allowing us to come in close to the, uh, water station and Public Works Department to fill up our trucks, um, whenever it is we need to utilize that, uh, particular portion. When do we need to utilize that? Um, we have an ample amount of lakes. Water, you know, when we're, um, servicing a fire or, uh, an emergency service, we're taking water from whatever source we can get it. And generally, if we're out in the unincorporated area, we're gonna go ahead and utilize that water. However, that water isn't good for our pumps to sit in. It's an unchlorinated water. So, what we'll do is pump our water out, come back empty, and try to fill our trucks when we come back home. What this is gonna allow us to do is just a matter of convenience. Rather than cap it, it's already metered. Um, just like they meter the water we take from the village now. Um, whenever we take water from a hydrant, we notify, uh, the water department about, uh, the approximate gallons we take out of that hydrant, um, so they can document that, um, for, uh, our usage. Again, this is more of a convenience factor. It sits inside the station. It's gonna feed just that sole purpose. So, um, you did grant us before, you know, because we had this, um, line, uh, prior, um, a fifty percent credit on our sewer service. Um, we paid for the water. Um, however, we, I can tell you, when push comes to shove, I'll tell them to go to Public Works or go get a hydrant, rather than tap into, uh, the water we're gonna pay for. I hope that's clear. If it's not, hammer move questions.
Just one quick question. Is it just at this station, or is it the other?
Just this station. Station two is a well, and station three is on a private system through prairie path.
Okay.
Um, so it's just this station. And, you know, really, the only the, the reason we ask is the line's already there. It's already metered. Um, if, if you don't see this as a viable option, we're gonna cap it, and we'll just continue to do what we've been doing, is go with the fire hydrants and utilize the other ones. So, really, it's a matter of the convenience of anything.
Trustee Pierce?
What's that? I think it's because the whole station was pulling off that same water line. So, that was the, um, you know, this is just truck fill. You know, it's not for washing the trucks. It's not for showering. It's not for domestic use. Uh, toilets, this is just, it's one pipe coming in, metered, and going out, you know, very similar to what you guys are doing or, uh, water department's doing currently.
Sounds good.
Trustee Pierce?
So, let me get this straight.
It takes water to put out fires.
Okay.
The clouds let the water come to the ground.
Right, right.
Evaporates, goes into the soil, into the aquifer, then the village pulls it, then you have.
I can tell you, the aquifer runs strictly right underneath station one.
I know where the, yeah.
Because when we cracked that open, it was a stream of water coming through. When we tried to, um, put our, uh, elevator shaft in, it became, you know, that's our money pit. Um, it just continually pumps water. So, I think part of the Seacoys Creek comes right down here and underneath station one.
My, my, my.
So, we could tap that.
Yeah. My family's well driller, so I know about.
Okay, sorry.
Anyway, anyways, um, you've got, so what you're saying is you've got two lines coming in.
We will.
You will. And one will just be this existing line only to fill trucks.
Correct.
And you'll have a meter on it, so you can tell us how much you pulled when you filled a truck.
Correct.
So, and then the other one will be a metered line that's just for showers and.
Domestic use, domestic use of the fire station.
Washing trucks or whatever. That'll be metered also.
Correct.
And we, on the truck fill one, we waive your fee. We, we don't.
We're asking you to waive that.
Okay.
That, that amount.
But currently, you get a waived at Public Works or wherever.
No. Oh, when we go, when we go to fill at Public Works, and when we fill off the hydrants, there's no fee. No.
Yeah. So, but then the other line that comes in for domestic use, I use your terminology, you pay us for that water and the sewer?
Correct. That's the current line right now that's coming in that we're asking to use as a truck fill line. So, we pay water and fifty percent of the sewer, uh, bill.
How much is that? Zeta, do you know how much money we make from them? I know this, may have to investigate this. I just can't.
Our bill, our bill is a couple hundred dollars per billing period. I'm not sure what the billing period is. Every two months.
Why are we even charging them for any of the water? That's what, that's what, I know they're taxing, but.
And we don't have a problem with that. But, you know, this is, you know, again, you, you were gracious enough to waive that fifty percent sewer fee. Um, this is just one more. If you want to waive the whole thing, great, I'm, I'm in. But, you know, really, I'm here to ask you just for this one line, um, as, as our construction moves ahead. If you, well, I invite all of you to come, take a walk through, come see me. I'll walk you through. But it's not the station you you're, you're used to. It's not the basement you're used to.
Okay. Well, I've got no problems with this. I don't know about the rest of the board. I got no problems. I think maybe we should have a future discussion.
Okay. Alright. Thank you. Alright, we'll move it to the next board.
Am I coming back two weeks?
If you want to.
If you really, if you really want to.
If I want you here, or?
If you really want to.
Oh, sure. I don't mind.
I mean, you could.
I don't mind. It, it conflicts with our district meeting, but it gets me out of there.
Alright, so, see here. Alright, thank.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Alright, we'll move to the next. Thank you. Alright, back to the top here. Um, item number two is overview regarding the splash pad at the open space development at Main and Orchard. Uh, Kevin Clark from Lakota and Justin, uh, Huad from Fountain Tech is on Zoom, are on Zoom. Um, so, I know there have been some questions at the last board meeting regarding the, uh, splash pad feature and um, the amount of water that would be used and the, um, discharge of water versus recycling of water, and how those discussions and decisions came to be. Um, thank you, Kevin, for being here. And I believe it's Justin. Is that who I see on there? Yeah, Justin. Um, so I know that, uh, most of the questions last meeting, uh, were asked by trustee Pierce, and, um, I told him that I, I asked your office that, no, sorry, trustee Masek, and I asked the office if you guys could be here to explain how those decisions were made, since this has been going, you know, meetings have been going on for years at this point. So, um, hopefully you could add some in, uh, insight to that, and I'll let the trustees ask questions.
Sure. You want me to start?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, um, good to see you. Um, Kevin Clark with Lakota. Justin is with Fountain Technologies. He was, um, working with us on the, on the splash pad feature. Uh, just as far as like the design effort and how we arrived where we were in decisions. Um, as you know, we're working with the steering committee throughout twenty twenty-two, um, developing the park and the design and all those, um, all the features that were going to be a part of it. Um, even before that, obviously, we had engaged the public and um, developed that program and came up with earlier designs. Uh, but as the process went on and we were getting more detailed, uh, designing each of the features, we had um, developed some concepts for the splash pad element. Um, there were multiple concepts that we developed to present to the steering committee and, and staff. Um, and with that, we refined a preferred concept, um, and provided um, with Justin's help, uh, numbers for what that cost for construction and options for how that can function. Um, so essentially, we worked with, um, the previous village administrator to, uh, design and, uh, figure out, you know, what were the decisions and decisions were circulating, recirculating system versus drain to waste. Um, you know, what, what kind of, where we're putting certain equipment as we de- designed the building. Um, and how that was all gonna kind of work together. Um, and, uh, we were provided guidance from, um, administrator Kime at the time to move forward in certain direction. Um, and from there, uh, we refined the design and kept, you know, getting into construction documents. And as far as the technical stuff, Justin will be able to answer those kind of questions. But that's the overview of the, of the process and how we arrived where we did.
Alright, thank you. Um, so last time, um, we discussed this or I, I, I believe there's discussion regarding how the feature, um, evolved from maybe an architectural type of feature, which was going to be misters and lights to more of a uh, play feature for kids. Um, so maybe you could shed a little bit of light on how that evolved, if you recall.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it was always intended to be, uh, for kids to be in. Um, we wanted to provide something that was both aesthetically pleasing, but it ultimately, it's a splash pad. It functions as a splash pad. It has nozzles that have lights as part of that. Um, that's pretty standard, uh, in some of these designs. So that's an interesting feature. Uh, we wanted to do the misting and, and the jets and the jumping leaping jets because that provided this dynamic quality to it. And so that was, um, you know, when we showed the committee and ultimately, I believe I presented this to the build board. We had an animation that Fountain Technologies had created that just showed, you know, how that all kind of worked together. Um, so that it created this really interesting, um, play feature and element that, you know, uh, also looked like it belonged in the park.
Um, thank you. I guess, um, what has been raised at, um, a board level is, um, and again, the board will get to ask you questions. And whether, what, how the decision was made, you know, are we being environmentally friendly? Um, using water that's going to, you know, against, I guess, drain into the creek somehow. Um, versus the cost of the recirculating system. Um, those are the type of questions that were raised, uh, recently, um, as the splash pad is becoming, you know, being built.
Well, I can let Justin answer the questions about the cost and, and what those, the differences are, um, in those kind of systems. Um, but we weren't here in that direction. Ultimately, when we provided those, the differences, um, to move forward with where we are now. But I don't know if you want to dive in, Justin, on the, the differential between those.
And just, um, yeah, as a lawyer, not supposed to ask any question you don't want to know the answer to, but I'm going to ask you a question. Um, like what percentage of the, uh, uh, systems that you're putting in are the recycled systems versus the, um, I guess, water that goes into the waste system or a creek? Is, are you able to quantify that at all?
Uh, it's an interesting question. I'd say it almost depends on the individual village or state or locale and could be a combination of budgets, um, skill level of maintenance staff, you know, being a certified pool operator and having previous experience with swimming pools and splash pads goes a long way towards a villager city's appetite for wanting a recirculating system versus wanting a drain away system. Maintenance budget for the years and other factors that comes into play. Um, ball parking. I'd say drain away systems are more common. Not by a huge margin, but maybe like a sixty to forty split. And I can definitely say they've been increasing in frequency and preference by a lot of villages because of the low maintenance burden that they have relative to recirculating systems.
Alright, I'm gonna, um, ask the board to open this to the board to ask questions. Um, so anything on this side of the board?
I have nothing at this time.
No, I, 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 I'll apologize in advance, but I know there's questions down here.
So the, the first question I have is we were told the drain away versus the recycled one will use like ten million gallons of water a year. Um, unless we have the cut on cutoffs which added into it. Was that thought about in the beginning or how was that determined not to have any sort of cutoff on there?
Um, the ten million gallons, where's that number deriving from or who, who came up with that number?
It was what we were told that unless we had a switch in there, we'd be using up the ten million gallons of water a year and.
But that might be possible if, but.
I thi- I think that was kind of shocking. I think it was based upon turning on at eight or nine in the morning and turning off at eight or nine at night.
Yeah, so I was going to say that I, I can't fathom how a feature would get into the millions of gallons for an operating season unless it's run continuously for eight to twelve hours a day for a three hundred sixty-five or a hundred eighty or two hundred ten day continuous period, which no splash pad does. Um, typically for these choreographed features, we'll have a very particular sequence and choreography to it. So it's very rare that all jets will be firing simultaneously, let alone running in a continuous fashion like that. So while I guess it may be theoretically possible, that's definitely not how we'd recommend programming or running the feature. We always intend to sequence it based on certain timers and certain operational periods and make sure that it's running within an appropriate, you know, season relative to the weather. So.
And if the water is draining, where's the water draining to? Directly through the creek, through a sewer drain or a storm drain or?
Typically, the water is going to storm. There's usually no need for it to go to sanitary when it's a drain away system.
And this, this makes me wonder why we didn't, if we're gonna, gonna have a drain away system, why we did just have it draining away across some rocks into the creek. But I think we eliminated that across the walks feature for cost savings.
Yeah, trustee, I would be referring to, we had, um, originally an option that had what we called the babbling brook where some of the water was going to spill over the, over the rocks into more of a, um, pool feature. I believe that's what you're referring to.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, um, trustee Maisick.
I'm gonna ask a bunch of questions here. Get to the mayor's question. How many, what's the percentage of of the recycled or the people that recycled that use Lake Michigan water versus well water? To his question.
Sorry, the, the mic was a little bit.
Well, water.
So Justin, um.
To add on to his question, the people that you said there's a percentage, what's the percentage that you would use well water versus recycle, uh, uh, Lake Michigan water?
As far as the originating source of the potable water that I'm not familiar with.
Okay. This, the second thing is I got an email. I, I pulled all the emails. So I, I, I pulled every email. I've got emails from, from the Lakota group that says this thing could be on even though there's nobody in the park. It's raining out and the splash pad is still be on. That there's no, once it's programmed, it's programmed. It is what it is. So we have no study of how much water is going to be pumped out. And just like a sun pump, if it's on all the time, that sun pump will drain. Our, our pumps to the well towers, th- they range at a hundred thousand dollars apiece. If we, if we, if the aquifers were to drain, we're gonna get, and I brought it up last meeting you weren't a part of, that we would get, start getting sued at millions of dollars per household if they had shallower wells in the village. And we pump up thirty million gallons to the house, to the, to the residents per year from our, our total well system to the residents. We didn't get a definite, I, I haven't gone through all the emails that how much this thing pumps out a year. There's some emails that looks like we weren't told all the information that Mr. Kime was given prior to what we were given. Like a lot of information was held back that I'll bring up in executive session and I'll share these emails with everybody on the board. So one particular email just stands out that was sent. Yeah, you can't shut this thing off once it's turned on. So there's no study how much water is pumped out. So if we get a drought season that people can't put water on their grass and we haven't infrastructure, there's been people on this board that don't want to increase our water bills to pay for the hundred thousand dollar pumps and everything else that comes with pumping all this water on. These pumps are running all the time in our, in our wells. What's that cost going to be? And how's the programming work?
So. So I think, um, Justin, I think what trustee Maisick is, um, looking for is how do we, um, control the outflow or when it's running or when it's not running or if there was a major drought, you know, shutting down the, the feature. Um, and I believe there have been some, we believe we approved about, uh, say a Ballard. An activator that will, um, control this at times. So, uh, can you help clarify that for, um, trustee and the board?
Yeah, um, one question I would ask back, so I just want to make sure I understand your question appropriately or, or rather the comment. There was the comment that it, it can't be shut down. I'm trying to understand what, what's meant by that or.
Programmed, it's programmed. So if it's raining, if, if you programmed it for whatever day and it be, it, it, the, the day was raining. And people drive by the perception, why is that splash pad on? It's raining out. People can't use the park when it's raining. And you got the splash pad running during the raining. If the program can't be overridden, it's on a, it's on its own lo- and, and it can't be overridden to where if we're gonna have weeks worth of rain, you just can't override the programming. Programming is such that it can't be just shut off.
Okay, understood. Yeah, so the.
Programming so intense, nobody understands how it's programmed.
But the, so the programming of the feature is entirely something we can coordinate with ownership on. It, it can be, just to make sure everyone understands the call it the full range of the feature's operations. The feature can use as much as two hundred to, to, I believe, two hundred thirty gallons a minute. It can use as little as a half gallon of a minute technically. And say something more reasonable would be using roughly seven or eight gallons a minute if all the fog units were going, you know, which is comparable to a handful of showerheads. So the feature's flow rate can be fully tailored and how the, the choreography is decided on and several choreography shows can be written that you can select from. As far as not being able to turn it off, that comment is true in the sense that once a choreography show is manually selected for the day or for the week or for the month, the program will always try to run that show, but the feature can be manually shut off at any point in time, you know, the morning, afternoon or evening of it will never. If you turn one of the control switches to off, the feature will not sequence and will not run it. It won't keep running arbitrarily over manual inputs. You can always give a manual input to, to shut it down or to isolate it for the day or to turn it off for a week. If you have a farmer's market going on or a show sequence, the feature won't arbitrarily run if it's not allowed to do so. Then now the comment regarding the rain is absolutely a fair one and that's, I believe, why the activation Ballard is being put in so that there is manual input required. And that's a, it's a great option because it does help to ensure that the feature only runs when there's bathers and patrons available to enjoy it and to appreciate it.
And who controls that? Does, does the village control that computer program?
The village can control when the choreography. I- i- in essence, yes, the village can control when that choreography triggers. But typically, we work with the fountain manufacturer, which is Crystal Fountains, to come up with the choreography because it's a bit of a nuanced thing. It's not the same as just programming an LED light. There's a lot of components to that DMX programming, but again, because the system can flow as, as little as a handful of GPM or as much as in excess of two hundred GPM, we can work with you to come up with a choreography or a couple choreography versions that, you know, are tailored to, to what you'd like to see for water usage.
So what's, what do you think this, through the summertime, this thing's going to pump out as far as volume of water?
They, again, it, it really depends on what kind of shows you pick. Um, it could be a really small number. It could be a really large number and.
And I, I, I don't remember being shown what shows to what gallons. That's where I'm naive on it.
No, I wouldn't say naive. It just goes back to, to being educated on it. And I, again, I think it needs to be a discussion with the village on, on where you'd like to see that GPM and then we can figure out a show that, that meets that, or we can give you a handful of shows that meet it. It's, it's not necessarily being naive. It's just, you know, a matter of going back and forth and coming to a decision together on what's appropriate for the village, the village's budget and, and if it needs to be tweaked after that first show is run for a couple of weeks or a month and you find that the water bill's less than what you're anticipating or more, then we can adjust the choreography to, to get it to where you'd like it to be.
Justin, I have a question. How do we, um, monitor it or quantify it? Like how much is being used either throughout the year or, uh, at the end of the year?
I don't know if you currently can with the way the plumbing system's set up. If you'd like to, we'd recommend putting a water meter on the water line that feeds the water feature specifically and then you'd be able to track it daily or monthly or whenever you'd like to, to log it.
Okay. Trustee Blueheart.
You know, obviously, the, the concern that trustee Maisick brings up about is the overuse of water and, and so on. So just to clarify, we haven't had any discussions in the board regarding the programming. Um, so we're, we're all kind of naive to what's involved in it, but if, if I understand what you're saying properly is, once we design a, the program or the choreography, as you called it, that will only go on when someone actually hits the Ballard switch over at the park, correct?
If you'd like it to be that way. So there's a handful of ways you can program it. You can program it to be activated strictly by the Ballard and only by the Ballard. You can program it to activate, say, once an hour, once every three hours, a handful of times a day. But there, there's different means and methods you have of controlling. And this is why it's, it's a bit hard to answer how much water will it use? It, it can really be tailored to, to meet what you'd like it to. If it's running twenty-four seven, that's very different than if it runs once a day, three times a day for five minutes or for an hour.
Okay. Is it, is it possible to have one program that is used when someone hits the switch versus these choreographed shows that go on at different times?
I'm fairly certain it is, but I'd have to check with the, the control panel designer to verify that, but I'm fairly certain that that is a possibility.
About is we want to make sure we're using as little water as possible and that we're not wasting the water that's going through this.
Mm-hmm.
So if there are options or things that we should have looked into or can still look into that will allow us to control that usage so that we're not abusing it and not using too much.
Yep. Yeah, that was never the intent.
That's what this all boils down to. We, I think the, the number of ten million gallons, and I don't know where it originated, but I've heard it, others have scares everybody. So I think we need to see.
Understandably so.
What's more realistic and give us those options to control it when we need to.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I can't think of a feature in recent memory that's used millions of gallons in a, a singular season. That, that's, that's tremendously in excess. That's actually one of the reasons because we want to design the drain away systems. Consciously, we added quite a bit of the fog units to the system because they only use a half gallon per minute, which is the lowest flow an interactive element could typically use. We find that they're used frequently in the West Coast because of water conservation concerns. So that's why the system does have, I believe roughly a third or half the nozzles are fog nozzles. So you have a very volumetric effect with very minimal commitment of water to achieve that effect.
Justin, or Kevin, can I ask, um, a question in the favor? So we have a meeting at the end of May. We're going to be discussing park items. Um, could we have some, I guess, some computer generated, uh, potential displays or how the fountains would work with, um, maybe corresponding like highest water usage to lowest so we can make some decisions at the end of May or start looking at that at the end of May for some guidance?
Yeah, we can reach out to Crystal. I think it's a good idea. So what I'd recommend is maybe three or four shows that show, you know, this lower end effect for five to ten gallons a minute visually looks like this, a more moderate effect at fifty gallons a minute, looks like this, a hundred gallons, a hundred fifty gallons. And then the, the biggest thing to remember. the, the biggest thing to remember when seeing any of those effects is we typically wouldn't recommend running them that singular way for continuous minutes or hours. We usually like to choreograph it because in the process of nozzles shutting down and lowering, you're using less water because you're not running at a full throttle. That's why we like the choreographed systems. They give the illusion of a lot going on while not committing to a full throttle volume of flow.
All right, trustee Pierce?
Just got a couple of questions for the, I guess, entire board. Um, how many people, how many members of the board in the audience have actually seen a splash pad?
Would it be possible to, to move the microphone closer?
I'm sorry, Mike, I have, I have a couple of questions and probably a couple of statements. Um, my first question is how many members of the audience here or even the board have actually seen splash pads when they're going around other towns or at other, like Disney World or wherever they're at and there's a splash pad going? So we generally have, if we have, we generally have an idea of what a splash pad is. And I think the board, when they designed, helped work with everybody to design this, they had a general understanding of what a splash pad was. So then that leads my next question, who on this board really wants a splash pad and who doesn't want it? Because it sounds like it's either we got the splash pad or we don't. And, um,
We got it. It's there. You, you, you can go see it. It's there.
So, I, and, and so this leads me to my statement about the splash pad. When I go to Yellowstone and I see a little puff of steam come out of Old Faithful, I'm pretty damn disappointed. You know?
It's different than,
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I know it's different, but I, I, I don't want to be so concerned about this that we, that we, that we limit the, the functionality of the device. I, I, I think it needs to be thoughtful. It needs to be planned out. It needs to be controlled. But I think we need to make sure that when somebody pushes that button, they go, oh, that was great what they did. You know, or someone, some kid's playing in there. He's jumping around and the water's squirting, squirting by him or something. He's giggling and laughing. I don't want to just go, oh, that was it, you know?
How many minutes is an, like a,
Sorry, Brent.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was, I was, but,
I know, maybe, I gotta ask, Scott, how many minutes is an average choreographed?
Show? Yeah, uh, depending on the flow rate, we typically see them last somewhere between five and fifteen minutes. And then depending on how much we want to conserve water or limit usage, we'll sometimes put in a restriction that says the Ballard can't reactivate for three minutes, five minutes, ten minutes. Or if it can't activate for that full-on show, it's doing a much lighter version of a show until it's allowed to, to do the, the more robust version again.
Okay, so I'm just gonna make one other statement and this concerns our water bill since it was implied that there's people on this board that, that don't want to increase the water bills and, and I generally tend to be one of those. My biggest problem with increasing the water bills is we currently have a system in this town where the water bills are automatically increased three percent a year. I voted against that when it occurred because I believe as a board, if we want to increase water rates, we should vote on it. Uh, we shouldn't just pass it off automatically. So that's why I generally oppose it unless we're, we're voting on it.
Any other questions about the splash pad? And I say, I think this is a, um, a continued discussion for the uh, May meeting and really, uh, if you guys could get us some, like I said, some visuals. I know you did. We've, I've seen the animations before, Kevin, that you had and Justin. So I think having, you know, like you said, off the, maybe nine of them, you know, three at the lowest tier, three in the middle and three at the max. So we can kind of see where we want to end up once it's programmed.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Anything? Thank you. Anything else? All right. Um, onto the main event. These poor guys have been sitting around in this room more than they wanted to. You're not charged this hourly, are you? All right, good. All right. All right. Thank you. Um, next is item number, uh, three, discussion regarding especially used variants and site plan for a solar farm to be located at the property, commonly known as six fifty East North Avenue. Uh, we have, um, Brian Madigan and, um, representation.
Yep, yep. That's Mayor, yeah. Good afternoon or good evening. Uh, thank you to the Board of Trustees and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for hosting us, uh, this evening. My name is Dave Stryker. I'm counsel of the applicant Deep Lake Solar. Uh, so I had the opportunity to be here, uh, with you all a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, you know, you may remember at that point, um, our landowner who we're, you know, we have a contract with, but we're not affiliated with as far as on a development company basis, had filed a petition to disconnect from Antioch. Uh, we stressed to the board that, one, we did not ask for that petition to be filed. Two, we did not want that petition to be filed. And three, we had nothing to do with it being filed. Um, that it was still our intent to continue to work with the Board of Trustees to make what we think is this very important project to reality, just to confirm that petition over the past two weeks has been formally withdrawn. Um, so again, we're here today to not only answer all of your questions, but hopefully, you know, earn your support for this project because we very much want to see this, you know, a reality in Antioch. And also, as I mentioned the last time, both Brian and I had the opportunity to sit through your TIF hearing, the village board meeting and the committee, the whole meeting. And we were very impressed actually with the concern of the citizens and you heard some of that here tonight with regard to Antioch being a special place and that the natural resources here make it a special place and that you want to keep it that way. We heard a lot about protection of water quality, a lot of comment about diversity of species, uh, protecting our lakes, protecting our waterways and protecting the land that makes Antioch, you know, what it is. And it got us thinking a lot as well. You know, we've had two PCB hearings. The most recent was March sixth. And that was actually about natural resources as well. The PCB wanted to hear more information with regard to whether the project would have any impact on migratory birds using the red wing slew. Uh, what we got to thinking last week is that we have a very good story to tell that you might not know, which is we intend to put a very robust landscaping plan in place. It'll be native, deep rooted plantings. Um, this has become fairly typical, uh, with solar in Illinois, especially in Northern Illinois. So it, it didn't strike us to be unusual. But what did strike us is that we really want to provide you not only with the time to ask the questions that you'd like from us, but, um, also to specifically brief you on not only the benefits of our landscaping plan, which again transitions this site from an agricultural use again to solar, but we're gonna have deep rooted native plantings that will be very positive with regard to water quality, also very positive with regard to species habitat, and also positive in the sense it still allows for some agricultural activities, you know, depending on what specific program uh, we go forward with. Secondly, we had the opportunity to really get into some detailed conversations with IDNR. Um, you know, which, which runs the slew. We have a situation here where we have a, a private landowner who we have an arms length transaction with to put this project on his property. And we also have a neighbor that we know is, is IDNR. That's not just important to it, but it's important to the Board of Trustees as well. So we've had a lot of communication with, with IDNR to confirm what we already believed is that the solar project will be a very good neighbor because as opposed to agricultural runoff, sediment buildup, fertilizer, whatever it's on the field at the time when it rains, uh, we're gonna now have soil stabilization with our native plantings. And we're also gonna have significant water quality improvements with that. So these are, again, topics that we thought more about in the past two weeks. And, you know, look forward to discussing with you tonight. And I also want to note that, um, you know, I was here working with Mike in December of twenty twenty-two on this project. Uh, I think we first went before the board and I was here for that in January of twenty twenty-three. So here we are in April of twenty twenty-four. I know we've been at this for a long time, but one, it shows how important this project is to Deep Lake. But also hopefully it shows how important this project is to Antioch and that everybody really wants to get this right. So as I mentioned, we've had the opportunity to brief the PCB twice. I don't know that we have any specific findings of fact for the board to consider. So again, we're, we're here to answer your questions about the project tonight. Uh, we have a pending application for a conditional use permit. And also we have a pending application for a variance from the half mile setback from protected areas. And again, you know, somewhat new information, but, um, we think that our, our neighbor being IDNR would really look favorably upon this project being its neighbor. Um, so again, going forward, we're looking to earn your support tonight and, um, thought it important to reference that, you know, we didn't direct our landowners to withdraw the petition, but we did direct the landowner that we want to work with the Board of Trustees to make this project a reality, that that's our first goal. So hopefully, you know, one, that's gotten across to you and two, obviously the proof's in the pudding that that petition was withdrawn. And we look very much forward to working with you tonight. So again, Brian is here, um, happy to answer any question you have, but specifically with regard to, I think, newer information, it would be primarily focused on how we see ourselves fitting into the environmental nature and the, the betterment of the Antioch community. And secondly, that we'd be specifically focused on the landscaping plan. And also, you know, with making sure we're a good neighbor, especially to the red wing slew. Um, so with that, happy to answer questions, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, I'll, um, go around. Trustee Berman, do you want to start? You have, you go down. Okay. Trustee Blueheart?
How much time do we have?
All right, um, I'll apologize now for kind of jumping around a little bit, but I've got a lot of thoughts in my head. I'm gonna try to be as direct and straightforward with you guys and hopefully get some, some answers. When I first heard about this project, I actually was excited about it. I thought it was kind of neat. I'm like a solar farm. It's kind of a new thing. It's, you know, I didn't know a lot about it, but I, I didn't have any concerns about. Um, as it went through, I, I've been to the planning and zoning meetings, sat through those. I've watched them again on video. And, um, I have a couple of concerns and I'm gonna ask some questions and if you guys could answer those, I'd appreciate it or as best you can. My first one is, is at the planning and zoning meeting, it was asked of your group if you had any other intentions or plans in the area for a solar farm. And at that meeting, it was answered no. And then we were shocked to find out, maybe a month or two later, my, my dates might be off, that you had a hearing for a solar farm off of Nelson Road, right down the road from this solar farm. That was then eventually approved by Lake County and you are building a, about twice the size solar farm than what this one will be? A little bit larger than twice?
Just a couple megawatts larger.
Okay. Um, and I think, Brian, we had a discussion and you had mentioned that you weren't aware of that, or you weren't working on that project at that time and so on and so forth is. So I guess my question is this, are there any other projects in the Antioch area specifically, but also in Lake County or right over the border into Wisconsin that your company is working on any other solar farms currently?
Uh, there are no projects in Wisconsin. Um, we have projects in Lake County that are currently in review. Um, but those are all on record, um, and, uh, have been made public. Uh, we do not have any other projects here in Antioch that we are pursuing. And I'd like to, you know, acknowledge and, and apologize. Um, I think, uh, what, you know, Dave mentioned tonight, uh, that we wanted to earn your support, but we'd also like to earn your trust. And I think we got off on a bad foot there by not acknowledging that we had another project uh, just down the road at the time. Um, this, that was before the state had adopted the siding bill. Um, and so Lake County's ordinance that applied to solar was very complicated. And I think if we, if we said we didn't have any projects, uh, in the area, it would be due to the fact we didn't have confidence that any of those projects would actually get approved because they were so early stage and, uh, Lake County's ordinance at that time was so complex that, um, you know, we didn't really, it, it was very unclear whether or not those would materialize into actual projects. Um, and so I apologize, uh, for getting off on a bad foot there and, um, you know, again, hope to, to earn your trust and earn your support.
Understand. Um, that being said, so there's, there's no other ones in Lake, or in Antioch that your company, are you aware of any other companies that are potentially building or looking to build in this general area?
I'm not aware of any others, but, um, they're, they're likely are, uh, just based on, you know, the way solar is kind of going right now. Uh, I wouldn't be surprised if there were other projects.
Is, one of my concerns and, and views shared to me by residents that live near the proposed solar farm is variety of different reasons, but one obviously is the, the appearance of them. It does change the appearance of North Avenue if there's one solar farm. Now we're gonna have two off of North Avenue. And what, what does that lead to? Does that lead to a third, a fourth, and all of a sudden is North Avenue Solar Farm Row? And you know, does that be, that changes the whole outlook of what Antioch looks like and become? So a lot of the objection I'm hearing from residents from my, you know, even myself is not over the solar farm itself. It's the location of the solar. You know, we live in an area where you drive five miles west and you have farm fields, farm fields that don't have residences or anything right near them. Why couldn't those be out there? And I understand it's up to the residents to decide who owned the property to, to request it from you and so on and so forth. But it just seems like this location is, is not to a lot of people, not the best because it's like the entry into Antioch. Um, and now we have the other one down off of Nelson Road and, and all of a sudden we're swat, you know, we're getting surrounded by. I've heard rumors and that's why I was asking the question of another one, potentially off of, uh, Grass Lake Road and, and eighty-three down in that section. That, like I said, rumors, I, I don't know. Um, but then we start getting in, I understand there's a solar farm out by the, the pits down one seventy-three uh, that I've heard about. So I mean, all of a sudden we're, we're surrounded by solar. Once again, not saying solar farms are bad, but just all of a sudden we go from having maybe one in a, a, in an old pit down on one seventy-three to being in areas that we're gonna see. Um, so my question is this, the solar farm, and I'm gonna ask, this is your project, the solar farm on, on Nelson Road, off of Nelson Road. Does that have the same Birmingham plantings, everything fencing that you've been offering on this project? Will that have that at the Nelson Road project?
Uh, yes. Um, both projects have robust, uh, visual screening and the one on, um, Nelson Road, had, because it's more exposed in terms of road frontage, um, we have a very, I guess, robust, I'll use the same word again, uh, vegetative screening requirements, um, along Nelson Road, uh, even where the project isn't visible, um, we're having to, to put a, a visual screening. So that's been designed by a landscape architect. Um, you know, it's staggered rows, trees and shrubs, much the same as here. Um, and so I think when you're driving on Nelson Road, you, you won't be able to really see into the project, just the same as, you know, our visual, uh, simulations that we prepared for this project reflect that when you're driving along, um, North Avenue, really won't be able to see it. Um, but recognize that community character, you know, is, is a concern. Um, and, you know, we, we had some ideas to help try and address that with the PCB. And, uh, you know, I welcome for discussion on that topic.
Is, now were those, uh, plantings, robust plantings, as you call them? Um, was, was that dictated by the county and, or the state requirements? Or was that something you did on your own on those, on the Nelson Road process?
There, there are Lake County requirements, um, which are, uh, robust.
Okay. Would you be willing to share with us the planning plan for the Nelson Road?
Sure, yeah.
So we can compare it to what you're considering over on, on Deep Lake, or, once I mean. Next question is a little more intense and, you know, we, we, you, you mentioned the deannexation plan that your, your property owner filed and then it's through this last couple of weeks. There is a lot of concern of residents and everyone else that regardless of what we do, if we say no, you're going to then file for deannexation and the solar farm is gonna happen no matter what. Um, because they, we, everyone is very apparent that the county will approve these at this point in time. There's a, a big favorability for that at the state and county level. So there's those that say, well, just let's say no, let them go do their thing and then we're not on the hook for what happens over there. Um, I tend to think that, you know, if, if we're in a situation that this is coming, regardless, it's in our interest to work with you to make sure that our residents are protected the best that we can be and, and so on. But it, it has to be a give and take to see where we're at. I mean, obviously there's only so much you guys can do over there and there's only so much that we could ask for and so on to get this done. And I don't even know if that would be enough. I'm just saying is that that's, I'm just throwing this out here. So I think from my standpoint, we're in a situation currently that. And I'll excuse my language, but we're damned if we do, we're damned if we don't. You know, if we decide as a board to work and, and sit down with you and negotiate this, you know, and what you guys have been working with us since the beginning. Um, you know, we, we might get some things that we wouldn't get otherwise. Um, we don't want to force our property owners to de-annex to try to get something they want for their property. But it's also something we have to watch out for all the residents of Antioch and make sure it's something that everyone. Is gonna be okay with. And so it is a tough, it's a tough call. I mean, it's not a coin flip, it, but it's, it's, it's a tough call. So I just want to say to the board and, and everyone here and you is that, you know, at this point in time, I, you know, I. My heart says no, but my brain's saying we should work with you to make this, you know, the best situation that we can. Because I honestly do believe if we say no, that you're gonna go and file for de-annexation and then go on and get that approved. And, and we lose all or any control over that property. And not just that property, any property beyond it down the road, if we wanted to annex in something down the road or something else, so. Um, that's where I stand right now. I, I would like to see what you're doing at the Nelson Road one or, or. Um, as much information as you're willing to share regarding the plantings and everything else, because. You know, one, it could be a good or a bad, it could be, hey, they're still doing this and it's in the county and so it might not be that bad. Or it might be where, you know, you guys have done, stepped up and gave us a nice, you know, planting, robust planting in the village site. So if we can get that information, that would be helpful to me. Um, but I think it's, you know, the, the residents that live around there, people I know that live across the street from there. You know, they're just, they're, they're, I don't want to say burnt out, they're frustrated. Now, they thought it was done when planning and zoning said no, so they relaxed. Then all of a sudden it came back and then they worked up again. And now they're kind of like, the reality has set in that somehow this thing's gonna be there anyway, so maybe we need to worry about what's best for. In the long run and working out the best deal. So I'm open at this point, but I think you have some work to do and I think, but we're getting. To that point where I think we need to either put up or shut up, I guess.
And to pick off our work, I just want to say, understanding your instrument. It was not a difficult choice for us because we want to work with the Board of Trustees in Antioch. That, here.
Yeah, thank you.
Justy Berman, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. Um. This would probably be a question for Mr. Garrigan. Um, so I know you, what was it? Was it twenty twenty-three that? What was, what, when did we start this discussion with renewable? I think we mentioned it earlier, but. I have twenty twenty-three, but I don't know if that's right.
Three, twenty twenty-three, there might have been some, even some discussions going back to twenty-two. We've been, you know, they, we had conceptual discussions, as you remember. Um, there was a conceptual discussion which I believe went to a planning commission before they formally applied for the special use of variance.
Okay.
So well over, it's close to two years this project, we've been talking to the applicant.
Okay, so my, my question is this, so. We've gone two years back and forth with all of this and I think that it, you know. The feedback that we've gotten from a large majority of residents in regards to this, um, I, I think it's, it would only be fair if we. The village board told residents what, so I mean, this has cost the village, residents, you know, taxpayers money so far. And staff time and everything else, and it's been shot down twice now. For what I believe are legitimate reasons from planning and zoning. Um, I mean, how much has it cost us so far for this? And I, I mean, I think that's a legit, legitimate question to ask. I mean, that's, it's taking staff time and now that it's come back again and it's two years, that's, that's a long time.
Right. Michael, I heard you, can you answer that in the mic? I, I thought you answered it, I didn't hear exactly.
There was a question about what the application fees were, that again, there was a concept application, which I believe was six hundred dollars in recollection. Then there was a special use um and variance applications and those I believe were a thousand dollars each. Um, so you asked the cost itself as of right now, um, those were the application fees.
Okay, but what about staff? I'm talking about hours put in from the village, like our village staff.
Staff time.
Staff, yeah, like what, and I'm not asking for a specific answer, but you know, just a general. Answer as far as hours, so that later on we can go back and kind of look to see what has this cost taxpayers. That's. An important question that I, I feel that a lot of people want to know.
Yeah, I'm not sure, yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I would know how to, where to start quantifying, quantify.
Michael, has the village spent any additional dollars other than normal work hours towards this project at all?
No, I mean, there have been, again, there was a staff report for the concept committee for plan commission. Um, there were several staff part, were some revisions um for staff reports that went to plan commissions. Um, but I, I, you know, obviously, you know, I won't say inordinate amount of time.
I, I would also add that, at least when I became involved, like I said, in December of twenty twenty-two, you know, we held off submitting an application. Because the village was undergoing considerations to its solar ordinance, you know, and that, that's, that. Process elongated this, I think fairly considerably and that work wasn't necessarily for renewable properties or deep lake. It was work that the village wanted to do for itself, just as you would with the downtown business district or anything. Thank you. Trusty Pierce?
Yep, and. What trustee uh Bluthart, what trustee Bluthart said about. A lot of the political concerns here, tho- those all exist, we know they do. Uh, but I, I have to recognize the fact that you have a right to be before us, whether we like it or not. Um, that is your right. Um, so. That being said, you mentioned in your preamble here that the IDNR says this is a, a, a great. Or not a great, but much an improvement over what currently exists. Have they written that anywhere in a letter? I know the letter they gave you in December of twenty twenty-two or whatever it was, said you couldn't, you couldn't grow during uh, you couldn't build. During the nesting season, but did they say this is a benefit to the Red Wing Slough or did you have that in writing?
Well, so here's, here's what we, we did, and this is in correspondence, it's to us, not the village. You know, I would encourage the village possibly to reach out to IDNR directly. But here, here are the questions that we posed, um, to the Department of Natural Resources and that, you know. It was, again, building on what we heard last week and consistent with what we thought the case was, but that you have a plowed agricultural field currently with, with row crops. That with the native plantings that we will obligate ourselves to put on there, that not only would that reduce runoff of agricultural sediment and, you know, potentially topsoil. Into the slough, but that it would also improve the water quality going into the slough. So we were asking him those areas within their expertise and they came back and said, uh, yes. Um, you know, the deep rooted native plantings, we would expect a significant decrease in sediment laden runoff and erosion. As compared to tilled soil and crop production. And then um with regard to a question we posed, um, generally speaking, would you see a greater species diversity in a field used for crop? Production, you know, versus uh one that again has native plantings, pollinator friendly. And they came back with, you know, in their view, a solar facility that has a diverse mix of native plants and is properly maintained. Would generate significantly more biodiversity. And they also came in and noted what I mentioned before, which is, you know, they would presume that there would be a significant decrease. Uh, in pesticide and fertilizer use, which would again greatly improve water quality at a minimum. Um, also, the deep rooted plants should limit the volume of water running off the field.
Okay, um, so then my next question is. Back again to trustee Bluthart's question about the county. Why not go to the county instead of the village? Why do you want to maintain your relation? Why do you want to maintain your relationship with the village if the counties, so by rumor and action proves to be so much easier and nicer and. Less of a burden, why do you want to stay with the village?
Two reasons. One, we're not looking for the easy path. Two, we're in the village right now. We've always been engaged with the village, at least for me personally, since December of twenty twenty-two. And I think, you know, for the people at Jim and Brian at Renewable Properties, you know, it's earlier than that. But um, we have always viewed this as a village of Antioch project, not a Lake County project. We've been with it for a long time. And I will say, after sitting through your TIF, city, you know, Board of Trustees meeting and the committee, the whole meeting two weeks ago. Feel even more strongly that the things we stand for are the same thing that Antioch stands for. So we think this project is a good fit for how the residents see. The community as a protector of natural resources and, you know, I've been impressed, I, I don't know what constituents are telling you, but I've, you know, Illinois has got a hundred and two counties. I don't know how many municipalities, but I've probably done projects in seventy-two of them. And this one is one where I haven't heard community pushback to. We've heard supportive comments, but. Haven't seen any significant comments by residents, you know, against the project, so. Um, okay, you know, we're happy to again, answer their questions.
So you kind of, you, you answered my question about, I had a question about runoff.
Yeah.
But what about soil impact, impactation?
Well, as far as compaction or?
Yes, because you're gonna have all, and they're building it.
Absolutely.
You're gonna have your maintenance rows and roads and stuff.
You know, uh, and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but we'll have inverters on this project that will sit in the middle on concrete pads. But as far as what's gonna go out in the field, it's primarily metal racking system that's post hole driven into the ground. Um, so these projects are very easy to decommission because you're not pulling up concrete. You're not having to rip the soil, you're pulling up the racking. It's fairly light equipment that they use to drive these post holes. Um, I think typically, I don't want to speak for the unions about which trade would be doing what. But there is either a post hole driver that you can walk around manually with or one that one operator sits on. But it's not heavy equipment like you would see for wind where there's big cranes out in the field. And you're putting a lot of matting down and having to rip it coming back off.
I could add to that because I remember your question from uh the previous P, or uh village board meeting when we asked for a continuance. Um, you had a concern about soil compaction during construction and what would we do to make sure once the project is constructed? How are we gonna make sure that the site regrows with the natural vegetation? And um to Dave's point, the equipment isn't all that heavy. Uh, but additionally, we'll be putting down four inches of, of topsoil on top of that to uh make sure that the, the new seeded um. Uh, plants take hold, so.
I would add too, I think we're flexible. We typically do work a lot with the communities on what type of plantings that they want to see. You know, I grew up hunting in Richmond and Hebron down the road. And there used to be a lot of wild pheasants sometimes and depending whatever state you're working with pheasants forever. To, or for cover for quail or wherever it's gonna be, sometimes it's heavy on pollinators. Like, again, that's something we would work with the locality to.
Right, and I seem to think you guys probably listened to my question about plantings there too at the last time, so. That kind of seems to be built in your presentation.
When we came back from that meeting, what work do we have to do that wasn't before that? It was really stressing, one, we want to work with you, two, we're flexible, but three. They're all gonna be good options with this length.
Um, one other, there, well, I got a couple more questions, but wildlife. You, your, your reports in here talk about the birds and they'd probably be happy and they'd be swinging, swinging amongst the things and tweeting and life will be beautiful and.
And they will.
Most of them will be preyed upon by hawks lying over and not by your plant, your, your facilities. Uh, but you've got a fence going all the way around this beautiful piece of property that currently the deer and the turkeys and other wildlife traverse through. But once you got the fence there, they won't be able to traverse anymore, will they?
So I can kind of speak to that. Um, we, we will have a fence around the project site. Um, I think if a deer wanted to jump over, um, you know, an eight foot fence, um, that's a long way to go, but they conceivably might be able to do it. Um, so deer sensibly should be able to kind of keep moving through the area. Or smaller um skunks or um bulls, mice, et cetera. Um, typically, we have a six inch um space between the ground and the top of the, of the fence. Um, to allow just for that wildlife movement. Um, but something, you know, based on the comment that you uh made at the, the last hearing about um agrivolt takes. And um, what does that kind of mean? Um, we have, put pen to paper and um. So this is something that we wanted to, you know, present to the Planning and Zoning Board as well, which is um, we'd like to introduce uh sheep uh for vegetation management. Um, so not only are we replanting the site with native grasses, orbs, legumes, are high nutritional value for the sheep. Uh, but we'll be graze, actively grazing uh the site for uh with, with sheep. And so that helps to keep um the site in agricultural production. Uh, local, we'd be working with a local sheep farmer, um, who would uh staff the site, for lack of a better word. Uh, you know, they'd prepare a grazing management plan and they, they'd figure out kind of how to rotate the sheep in and out. But um, it's roughly, I think, three sheep per acre they're envisioning. Um, and so I mentioned all this because when you do the sheep, you have to keep the coyotes out, which means that um. We'd have to find kind of an alternate solution when the sheep are in there. To, to keep out the predators. Um. So, so.
On piece.
In the. In the. They spit. Um. Uh, so in the winter months, um, when there's no sheep on the, the site, we would, um, I think we could find a solution where we have a gate. Every so often for, you know, we open that up during the, the winter months, so those critters can keep moving through. But when the sheep are actively there, we do want to keep the predators out.
You can keep the skunks on the east side of it, please. Um. The taxes on here, you say the first year there's gonna be a additional tw- two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in taxes potential. Um, but District thirty-four only gets a ten K and District one seventeen only gets about sixty-six K. I mean, six point six K. Um. The village typically, normal tax structure around here, the, the school districts are normally getting the most amount of money. So I'm trying to figure out where, where two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars evaporates.
Yeah, I can tell you how that works because it's done pursuant to a statute. Which is the assessment of the project, all the project assets will be qualified or classified as real property. And they'll be assessed as such, and it's done pursuant to a formula that's set forth in statute. That um has escalators for CPI and then de-escalators for depreciation. But through that process, and Department of Revenue's published a two-page guidance on that. We can tell exactly how much property tax we're paying in any given year, um, broken down by district. But consistent with what you're saying, in my experience, the schools are typically sixty-five to seventy percent of your overall. Yeah, it's seventy-nine here.
Yep.
Of your overall burden, but um, that is, you know, we're not looking for any abatements of any kind. So that should be assessed value times levy rate broken down by your taxing districts.
So can you generate during your, during these discussions, and how much the village should expect out of this?
Yeah, the village, you know, again, by being in the incorporated area of Antioch, the village would be a taxing district and. Yeah, because we should be able to, to get that pretty close to the penny, because we know.
Presented a planning and zoning upgrade.
I think they did, but I don't.
Yeah, we can get that far. And uh to your prior question with regard to um. Pollinator and vegeta, again, I said we could customize that and typically, even if we're not before PCB, that could be a condition we enter into as part of the CUP.
I do like the pollinators because bees are a big thing around here. We got a lot of honey people.
Mm-hmm, no doubt.
And, and I like the, the looking to make it a, a shared agricultural, but natural.
So there's a number of different seed mixes we could consider and tailor that locally.
Um, while he's looking at the numbers there. Um, I liked what trustee Bluthart said about just getting information on how the, the Nelson Road one is, is planned. Because honestly, I live in the neighborhood that's gonna get all the runoff from that, possibly. So, you know, I'm curious as to on Nelson Road, if it's draining in through uh our little swampy area then into our lake. I, 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 if I could see the, how you guys are planning for water flow there, I could compare it to what your plans for water flow here are.
Yes, this is your one. Okay, so just broken down by year one, according to our numbers, and again, this is done via statutory formula, so it's, it's, it's very accurate. But the current assessed market value is approximately twenty-seven thousand dollars. With the solar improvement, it would exceed two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars in assessed, assessed valuation. Um, that would take the high schools' revenue from eight hundred and ten dollars to seven thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars in year one. Uh, Antioch School District thirty-four from approximately twelve hundred dollars to eleven thousand dollars. Um, I'm looking for the, oh, the village. Um, I'm looking for the, oh, the village would go from about two hundred and sixteen dollars to approximately two thousand dollars.
Okay. Yeah. So two thousand dollar gain, so.
That I'm just talking in year one.
And you don't have to answer my next question because it may be proprietary towards you guys. Um. I'm estimating so far you guys probably spent a million to two million dollars on this, this evolution and your, your. ROI may be around forty-five to fifty-five million dollars. Is that about correct?
I can say, you know, thus far we have spent, um, in the permitting process, I think it's about two hundred and seventy-five thousand that includes. Consultants and, uh, design.
Does that include the lawyers that come here and sit here for hours and watch us talk?
No, we don't disclose that to you.
Okay. So, so you guys spend a lot of money, but you have a, a lot of potential for return on your investment here. From what I had been reading, uh, uh, the megawatts, the twenty megawatts over twenty to forty, thirty years. Are in excess of thirty million, probably forty-five million.
The, the cost of the project, um, is roughly like five million dollars. Um, I. Would have to check back and see what the projected revenue or. Yeah, with the revenue associated with the project might be. But, uh. You know. Significant investment made here initially that takes a while to pay back as well, so. It's not just, you know. Not.
It's not just magically in your pocket.
No, no.
But you know, um, one thing to add to that too, that. There's obviously return on investment for the developer. It wouldn't be here. But I, I used to be the general counsel in the Department of Commerce, which has the state's energy office, this community solar program that we're part of here. Been looking to develop that for a long time because not only do you hope. It's beneficial for developers to get renewable projects in, but also the subscribers, the community-based subscribers. Will have below market power too, so, um, it's good for the residents. It's good for the area. Hopefully it's a very mutual.
The, the residents that get signed up in time.
That's right. Well, the residents that subscribe, that's correct. Sometimes it's school system, sometimes individual households, sometimes it's groups.
And, and the only reason I'm, I'm talking about this is because. You guys are gonna, if we approve this, you're gonna. Gain significantly over the course of the, of the project.
Yeah, you know, I, I couldn't tell you percentage wise, but you know, when you talk about a, a utility investment. For instance, the Waukegan Plan at ComEd, you know, that it knew it was getting an eleven percent return. Here it's subject to market conditions, obviously, but, um, it, the program is designed again. The benefit developer is enough to get people interested, but the primary benefit is supposed to be to the subscribers and the residents.
Yeah, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to put together your gain versus our two thousand dollars.
Well, and again, hopefully your kids go to these schools, which are getting, as we noted, the lion's share of that. And, um, the residents will benefit. And again, I, I hope.
And again, they're getting eleven thousand dollars if they're district thirty-four.
Yeah.
Yep.
But remember, they will get that if they de-annex. They don't de-annex from the school district.
I know they don't.
So the schools will be, get it no matter if it's in the county or here.
I understand.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Trustee Mason.
Yeah, you gotta think is this could be a risk because if the next president comes in, drills, drills, drills. Starts throwing a lot of natural gas in the market, starts burning, making free electricity. You guys might be losing that, so.
Um, actually solar designed to work with gas, so I work, you know, I work on a lot of gas.
You can bring down a kilowatt to make less money, so you're.
Absolutely, because your highest price, your highest price power is coming gas out of the peakers in Illinois. It's over a thousand dollars.
Solar might hurt your profit margin, so.
Um, it shouldn't actually, but.
Hopefully not.
Hopefully not, but again, um, this is a state program, so it's not, not tied into any federal program.
Everybody wants. Clean water.
Right.
Clean air.
Sure.
Nobody wants in their backyard.
Again, you know, we've heard from a lot of supporters here. Yeah.
I hear what everybody's saying. Doesn't make sense. Get electric yard, clean water, clean energy. An axymoron.
All right. Thank you, trustee Peterson.
I have a couple of questions. Um. I, I was at the library meeting that was held and there were quite a few people pushing back that night there. Um, some of them were residents. I have a question about residents. Have you offered to buy those properties that you're completely surrounding? Have you talked to, uh, what is Dennis and Sandra Sheen? Um, and. I mean, you're completely surrounding them other than. They can pull out of their driveway and deep like road. Just wondering, did you ever think of them and, and offer to buy their property?
Absolutely thought of them and, um, I tried to reach out to all the neighbors directly across the street. Um, along North Avenue. And. My phone calls were not returned. Um, I definitely. Wanted to speak with them to understand better what the concerns were. So that we could try to address them. And I think that, you know, you're working with, uh, Director Garrigan. The vegetation screening that we've proposed, you know, really. Make sure that they're not going to be able to see the project. It'll just look like a row of trees and shrubs.
Right.
Et cetera. And you know, one of the things that, that we had tossed out as a. Excuse me, potential condition of approval. Was, um, you know, the equestrian style fencing. I know that that, you know, the comprehensive plan. Talks about Antioch as an equestrian, you know, the estate district got equestrian oriented, um, area. But, you know, I'm, I'm open to discussing that further. I definitely want to do everything I can to make sure that. You know, I address the neighbors' concerns as best as I can and I've. Tried to reach out to them, but I haven't heard back.
Okay, okay, and, um. How tall are the poles? What do the poles look like? I know that you're going to have to switch out the poles. Something's got to bring this energy to the substation. Um, and I, and I'm thinking the substation that's closest is the one right by the railroad tracks. Um, that you can access off of eighty, Route eighty-three, that one?
I know it's close by. I can't remember exactly.
Yeah, I think that's the closest one. So. You're gonna have to put up new poles. How big are they?
Um, they're about thirty-five feet. Basically the same, same height as, uh, existing.
Three and a half stories.
Three and a half stories, that's. Uh, that doesn't seem right off the top of my head. It has to be the same as, you know, uh. An existing distribution pole in the area.
Really? Okay.
Should be, yes.
Okay. And, um. To your point where, you know, residents can subscribe. But they don't. Necessarily have to be a resident. The residents are going to look at this. And they're going to see it all the time, driving. Up and down North Avenue, but they don't necessarily, they're not going to be the subscribers. It could be someone in Winthorpe Harbor or someone in Libertyville. It doesn't necessarily, they just have to be a comment customer, which we all are.
So that's the, the financial benefit, correct? Um, but I think that, you know, the, the electrons tend to stay local on the distribution level. To where they're generated. That's kind of the idea behind distributed generation like this. Um, you're improving the grid locally where you cite these, uh, generating, solar generating facilities, so. Um, we would be in, making investments into the, uh, local infrastructure there, the, the line that runs along. Um, North Avenue. Um, and then probably, uh, some, some upgrades at the substation as well, which I can. Try to summarize better for you.
Okay. And my question. How much of Deep Lake Road and North Avenue is going to be tore up from this? I mean, how, how much of those, uh, residents going to be impacted with the construction of this?
Construction will probably go for about six months. Um, at its peak, uh, when they're, they're driving the, the posts. Um, that's about a, you know, three weeks to, to four weeks, and that would probably be. The time period in which there would be the most traffic. It's kind of like a bell curve. It, it starts out slow with site preparation and then. That's kind of the, the height and then drops off again. Um, but it, I don't envision that, uh. Local traffic would be highly disrupted, but we would be happy to prepare a traffic management plan during construction. You know, in advance of building permit to make sure that we didn't, uh, create any adverse obstructions or interference.
Okay. That's all I have, your honor.
All right, um, before I, I have just a couple of questions or comments. So. As this has been before us for a while, I've thought about this a lot and, um. I also. Think it's a, uh, foregone conclusion. If this solar farm is, I believe this has been mentioned, if this solar farm is going to be in this location or not. It appears, you know, obviously if this is denied at the board, um. I believe the lawsuit that. Was filed will continue and I think the likelihood of success is pretty high. I also think that, um. From a village standpoint, we have to decide is it something? That's been mentioned. Is it something we want to control the design, the use, the look, the feel of? And I think that's. Whether we approve or deny it, um. It just depends, um, how we want it to play out politically, because if we deny it. And it goes to the county, we say call, you know, call in the Peterson, we didn't pass it or vice versa. So. In that regard, I just had a couple of questions, um, about the project itself. Have you guys ever had a project where you've had? As part of the agreement, if it gets. If it passed or passed in the area where there's like an annual. Fee to the village, use fee, you know, that's paid annually towards the village in excess of the. Two thousand dollar tax bill that, you know, may be generated. And you don't have to give specifics on it now, but is that something that you've negotiated with other, uh, communities? In that regard?
Yes, um. We have and, uh, not in Illinois. New York State, but, um. The, you host community agreement, um. That we proposed, uh, to offset the administrative burden of, you know, the village having to bear the brunt of the project. Due on, you know, uh, completion of, of construction or commercial operation. Is something, you know, that we provided to the village here for, for your review and, and, um, feedback on.
Okay, um, how many projects have you completed in? Lake County or, or actually, um, been appro, been approved on? I guess at the county level.
County level. It's either two or three. I can't remember.
Where, so have any of them been denied? Have any of them been denied at the county level?
Uh, none of them have been denied at the county level. Um. We had another annexation.
Hawthorne Woods?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then when, as have come up for vote at the county level, do you have any idea what the vote looked like? Is it unanimous? Is it fifty-fifty? What does that look like?
Uh, thus far. It has been unanimous. I think it's just two that have been approved so far. We have another one. In final.
Okay, um, and then my last question is, I know that, um. Or I've read, I don't know, I've heard on the news that most of these panels are made overseas or in China. Are there any US manufacturers that you guys are starting to work with or have you ever had, um, the request to use? Panels that are as part of the approval that are made in the United States?
Yeah, I can't commit to, um. To using US-made, uh, solar panels. It, it's, you know, it's a fact right now, an unfortunate fact that a lot of those, a lot of the panels are being manufactured overseas. We kind of have to go with, you know, the, uh, what's available and economically feasible at the time. We haven't procured any equipment yet.
Okay.
But, um. You know, we, I've, I would like our company to be buying American. It's just not, there's only really one company right now for solar.
Ohio?
Ohio.
Right.
And, um, unfortunately for them, those panels contain the cadmium telluride, which gets a bad name, even though the amount of cadmium telluride in those. Panels is below the EPA, it's at the limit. So that comes with its own set of, you know, fears, um. So I, I would definitely, I know everyone at the company would like to buy American. It's just not commercially, you know.
The one, the ones that are coming from overseas, do they not contain that chemical that you just mentioned or what? I don't know enough about that.
Yeah, no, the, uh, we would be using, um. Crystal and silicon, uh, panels, um, that don't contain cadmium telluride. So it's just a different kind of technology.
Okay. All right, listen to my question. I'm gonna go down here. Yep.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, two more things. Um. I, I know that you. Been very nice. Okay, don't get me wrong. However. You, you stated you used the word trust. When you first got up here. And. I, I don't know how. And I hope this doesn't come off harsh, but I don't know how you expect. Residents and our town to. To trust. When. Even if we decide as a town, what's best for us, that this isn't. Isn't what's best. That you're still going to proceed with in anyways. I mean, I don't understand how you expect there to be any trust with that. And I know. I know that the, the whole point of your community meeting, uh, what was that November? Was to sit down and to establish trust because I know that on your website that. Somewhere on there, it specifically states that, that, that kind of. Starts that foundation of trust, but. I was there at that meeting and there were a lot of residents that had concerns and. Being that you guys are, this is what you guys do, right? And you've, you said you've been doing it for a long time. I, I will say that I was very disappointed that. A lot of those questions weren't unanswered and it took. I, I believe it was like over a month. Um, there was even a, a planning and zoning board meeting that was canceled because you guys weren't ready yet and I don't. For me, I don't understand if this is what you do, why weren't you able to answer those questions? They seemed like relatively easy questions. And I think that at that point at the community meeting, I think that's one that trust was just pretty much thrown out the door and. I think it raised more concerns. Um, I know it did for me. And then as far as the. The panels, you said the, the silicone, uh, versus the, um. Yes. So. The ones, the ones that you guys are getting. When they're manufacturing those panels, and this is where I don't, this is another thing that's kind of. Confusing to me. So you guys are doing this to make a greener earth, to make it, um. Observer. However, when you guys are, when those, not you guys, China is manufacturing those panels. The toxic chemicals that are coming off of that are not good for the planet, so I don't. It just kind of counters. What you guys are trying to do. So even though. While they're sitting in the field, yes, they're not producing all these bad things, but. To get to that point to make that panel, it is, you know what I'm saying? I mean, can, could.
Yeah.
Right?
It's, uh, yes, it's a legitimate concern. Um, you know, in talking with our health and safety expert. And I think some of the concerns that were raised at the community meeting. Were topics that were new and I apologize if we didn't have answers.
And I, and I didn't expect you guys. Don't get me wrong. I didn't expect you to be like, oh, right on it. The, here's the answer. I know you're human. Okay, um. But I, it, it did feel like there were. A lot of questions that couldn't be answered. And I think that that left, that period of time kind of left everybody on edge. And they, i- it did, it did raise a lot of concerns and I, I know you guys may not have. I don't know as far as residents, um. Voicing those concerns to you guys, um. I mean, on the other hand, I've had two residents. We had one that came, it was a teacher from the high school, that gentleman that came here. To speak and then I had, um. A woman that had emailed me, very nice woman, teacher, um, that was in favor of it, but other than that, that is literally the only two people that have. Been in favor of it. I have, I've had a lot of people reach out by phone, um. And in person to talk about it because they do have legitimate concerns, um. In, I mean, I was at the planning and zoning meeting too and I heard their concerns that they raised and I, I just think that, um. I just think it's kind of hard to establish that trust now, um, especially knowing now that. Cause we didn't get a no, but. We know that either way, you're gonna push forward with this. And I think that just complicates it more.
Well, just uh, back to your question about, you know, the chemicals or, you know, production manufacturing process and what kind of environmental. Externalities um, does that create? And um. You know, our, one of the things we obtained and submitted to uh, the PZB was a health and safety report and an affidavit. That's signed by a licensed mechanical professional engineer, he's also a professor at uh, North Carolina State. Um, and one of the topics that's covered there is. You know, within the first, I think, three to five years, the um, the negative environmental externalities created through the manufacturing process. Are, you know, it takes five years for kind of that to go away and then the operating life of the project is thirty-five years, so it's got. You know, another thirty years to be completely beneficial to the environment.
To compensate for what was.
Yes.
Got it, okay, um. We have one, I can't think of the question, yes, um.
Thank you.
Yes, and the trust verified there's issues that I want to make sure you do this. Planning landscaping.
Yeah.
Little, little round of reggae. Alright.
Um, I want to follow up on something trustee Peterson mentioned and, and I hadn't thought about actually. The power that's generated there is transmitted to ComEd where? Now, cause she mentioned about the polls. Are you running a whole new series of polls all the way to a, where does it connect, how many polls are we talking about, where does it connect to the main ComEd? System, I guess.
Um, so. Will interconnect to the existing, existing distribution line um, along North Avenue. Um, it's usually through a five or four pole setup where. Two of the poles closest to the array, two or three of the poles closest to the array are ours and next to our ComEd. Um, and, and then. It ties into the actual uh, conductor.
Okay, so it doesn't actually, you don't run a whole line to the.
No.
The next part is, is something that you sent me information on regarding the, the subscriptions for the residents or people in general. And I've gone on ComEd's site, I've gone and tried to find information. Now, I don't consider myself a dumb person, but I couldn't figure out what it would cost me, what the benefit would be. None of it from all those sites that I went on. Is there a way that you can? I know you can't give me probably exact numbers, but is there a way to explain that to me on how that would work for the, the citizen of Antioch? Who wants to subscribe to this program? Cause when I went on there, there was a whole bunch of programs that I could subscribe to, but which were all over the state or all over the ComEd area. So I was really confused on how exactly that works, so is it? You subscribe and you can name that system and you, you subscribe by buying a certain amount of energy from you directly? Is that how that works and you get a credit on your bill, or how exactly does that function and, and what is an average household going to? Potentially recoup or save by joint or subscribing to your? System?
Um, so the subscription is, there's no, there's no fee, you don't have to um, pay any money in order to subscribe to the community solar framework. We typically work with a, a company like Ampion who kind of manages the customer subscription process for us. And so Ampion is a company that makes that community. Subscription process pretty clear, um, so that might be a better resource, um, they might be a better resource and that would just be conceptual, we haven't. Um, we work with them in New York State, um, we don't have any commitments here for this particular project because it's obviously not approved. So I don't know, David, if you can.
Yeah, I mean, the, the solicitations I've seen have primarily been by mail and whether it's Ampion, you know, the one I see is Constellation, which is our.
See, see, this is what's driving me crazy, I looked on Ampion, I looked on a bunch of these sites. I couldn't figure out what the savings would be or if there even is a saving. And it, and, and literally when I was reading it, it made it sound like I had to subscribe to a set amount. Of a fee or, or, not a, a fee, but you're paying the energy directly to them and then in turn, it was so confusing that I couldn't figure out. I'm just trying to get an idea that if, you know, what is the resident of Antioch gonna benefit from this? If they sign up and, and, or sign up to any of those programs, so one that you have running, what does the average person get out of it?
So typically it's, you know, around ten, ten percent in terms of savings on a monthly basis. Um, that's an average and it depends based on the amount of electricity that's generated uh, by the project. That you've subscribed to, um, and so that amount of your kind of share or subscription. Gets applied to your, your bill in terms of credits, it's sort of like net, you know, it's like if you. Put panels on your roof, you would get an offset in your bill, cause you, at some point during the day, you'd be exporting electrons. Concept is similar, like instead of putting solar on your roof, you subscribe to this project offsite and you get to receive the same benefit in terms of a, a, just a, a bill credit.
So, so what you're saying, if, if I'm rea- and I hate to keep pounding on this, but. So I could sign up today and start getting savings on my electric bill and I don't have to do anything else?
You subscribe, but.
But such, so I hit a button, subscribe that I agree to, subscribe to this program and I'll see a savings, I, I could do that right now for a project.
Yes.
Somewhere else.
Yes, yes.
In ComEd, now, is there a, a limit to the amount that subscri- can't subscribe to any one project?
There is a limit, I couldn't tell you what it was, but if. Sometimes you do get big users that want to come in and take a big chunk and I, I don't know what limit it is, but there is.
So it is, there is like a kilowatt limit that they can subscri- take subscriptions to that project on, but as long as there's opening somewhere, you can subscribe and benefit.
Yes.
Nothing further.
Just see Pierce?
Well, first of all, is, is that um. Business on North Avenue that. Went by the. Right at North Avenue and, and uh.
Forty-five North. Their old restaurant?
It's, it's right up here, it was a small, small business that opened up that their job was to sign people up to.
They're not there anymore, it's empty, yeah.
Okay, I thought maybe we could ask them if they knew what they're talking about. And then the other thing is, I've got a picture here, I'm, I'm sorry. And I went by a place that was under construction, so it's obviously torn up. Those power poles, are those kind of what you're talking about for the power poles?
Yes.
Yeah, it's kind of, kind of grainy, I'm sorry. I mean, it's, they're kind of.
Yeah, I can get you.
Yeah, could you? Alright, cause that, yeah, that just looks like a couple of power poles with some transformers on them.
Okay. Alright, anybody else down here? Just see Peterson?
So you did mention that in New York State, um, you do pay the, the community. So. I'm wondering if it would. Be advantageous for Antioch to recoup. Some of this money for. Our community. Parks. You know. Enhance the community. Hmm?
Yeah, I mean, there, I've, again, there's a hundred and two counties and although I have a number of municipalities, I've worked in a lot of them. There are all kinds of different priorities and, and agreements, you know, sometimes as um, Brian was saying, your transportation management plan. May show some specific issues with the roads. That if you want to be out there operating on them, that need to be improved up to a certain level, you see things like that, um.
Well, I was thinking more of on the lines of something on a regular basis, yearly. Um, to help with our parks.
Hmm, sure. Yeah, it's been done, yeah.
Okay, I'm just.
I mean, any big real estate.
I'd really like to look into that.
This is Illinois.
See a million.
I know.
I will also say.
Finally, it's gonna help us.
Finally, we get ComEd.
What you don't have to deal with. You know what the property tax we're gonna be paying, a lot of times that's a huge negotiation, so. There's a lot of set benefits that we have the ability to really monetize in all our community projects, but you don't see in other states too, but.
Is, is there a one-time payment added into this already, or did I hear that mentioned at some point?
There was in one of the, one of the, one of the, yeah, about twenty, yeah. Yeah, that, yeah, and.
I think our attorney should be addressed.
Sure, sure, so.
That's why I was sitting there.
Here's what I would suggest, uh, let's move this to the next meeting, although I believe the village attorney has to clarify what would actually be voted on at the next meeting because. I believe there were several items. At least three voted on by the PZB that would need to come before us. Next time would be the special use, the variance, the site plan review, um.
The fact would be, need to be. Um, ratified or acknowledged by this board after going through from the PZB. And then if this did go forward, if. There would, I'm sure, um. Council's doing an excellent job for his client, will present us with a community impact agreement, that would have something akin to a tipping thing. It could be money that would be applied to roads, the impact that the trucks came through. Or um, like we have a lovely park next door, if you guys haven't seen it yet. Um, you may have heard about it this evening, um, bike pass or whatnot. And um, again, if it did go through and if the board wanted to entertain that. That, that could be an offset on those costs and plus an offset in a reimbursement for the fees that the village has expended going through this matter. But again, that's all up to the discussion of the board.
Just, you're talking a one-time fee?
No, no, um, it would be a one-time fee. For that, and then there would be an annual payment based upon some negotiated factor that goes forward to offset. The, the time, for example, Dennis would put in there, um. Or the time that uh, Mike and Mark and myself have spent on this project. And the impact on the roads and the impact on, I don't want to say the environment, cause I think that that comes with more nuance.
Community as a whole.
We can use a whole parks and recreation. And whatnot, and council, um. And I'll just say this, council has been great with regards to communication with me. And so I'm sure we can engage in these conversations going forward, if the board would like, I will do a memorandum. Within a week about all the votes that would need to be taken before that. And I'm sure council will be happy to um, share the information from the state that he received too.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank, so let me ask, um, since you guys have traveled, other things involved, when would you want to be on the? Regular board meeting, would it be, I mean, we have one in two weeks, a month. Month and a half, uh, where would you like to see this land on the, um, so that you, the lawyers could?
I think the attorney and then we'd have.
Okay, so let, we will put it on a, a, a board meeting, why don't you guys discuss the attorneys? And see where that lands as far as a date, and again, I appreciate, um. However this turns out, you know, the professionalism and the, um. The amount of time and they've taken to explain things and answer our questions and. Uh, supply all those documents that I read in the board packet for this.
That's right, I just wanted to get clarification, so at the. Whenever they figure out when we're gonna come back in front of the board here. That will be when we'll have a final package that's been discussed or negotiated between the lawyers and you, administration and them, and then. We would that, at that point be voting on the overall acceptance of this type of, or this. Well, you're gonna let us know, exactly, but everything would be in front of us definitely, we'll have everything relevant that we'll need, correct?
Yes, it'd be a series of votes, I assume that if the board voted to not grant them a special use permit, they're probably not entering into a, a community impact agreement with us. Um, so there's a bunch of different issues and that's what I want to do, I want to lay it all out in a memorandum, send it to the board, board knows everything that we're doing. And then whether it's, and I'm just hypothetically saying this, whether it's on the, I believe it's the twenty-second or the eighth are our two meetings, is that correct? Eighth and twenty-second, so let's say it's the eighth of the twenty-second, um, we will have on the, on the board meeting agenda, those line items for each one, action items for each one of those things, trustee, does that help? I just want to be able to get.
No, it doesn't, I just want, I want to be able to know what.
Yeah.
We're talking about before we vote on the first step of it, I want to have everything in front of us.
And before I want to, I, I believe I know what it is, I don't like to guess as you know, so I'd rather take a couple of days. Go through everything that was done at the zoning board hearings, set out a memorandum and then have and circulate it to the board, if that's fair. Okay, and then council will come back with a very generous offer for the impact agreement.
My client might, yeah.
We're not expecting you to.
I will spend a lot of money on these restaurants.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks guys, alright, have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, on the items number.
Eight.
Eight.
I'm sure Brian, I'm sure Brian spent plenty of money on hotels in Antioch so far, hopefully you're staying in Antioch in that current year. Alright, um, next item is the uh. Number eight. Itinerant restaurant license code amendment waiving fees for brick and mortar, um, I'm gonna ask clerk Ro Mine to um, explain this item and probably the next item as well.
Uh, so when the, when the food truck ordinance was approved by the village board, um, you all um, made an exception to food trucks who operated brick and mortar restaurants in town. Waiving the food truck license fees for those establishments. Uh, there are a, a handful of um, brick and mortar restaurants in town that operate, um. What might be considered a food truck, but is actually not licensed as a food truck under our code because they're not vehicles, they're trailers. Um, so they don't have a bin, they don't have um, some of the requirements that are outlined in the mobile food truck vendor license, so they're licensed technically as itinerant restaurants. And our itinerant restaurant section of the code does not provide for a waiver of those license fees for establishments that have brick and mortar.
Is that like the Antioch pizza trailer out there by Monax?
Fifteen Lakes, Casa Ruiz, those are all um, operating under itinerant restaurant licenses, not food truck licenses, so technically they should be charged. The, the additional fifty dollar fee, which is waived for um, food trucks. Under the food truck section, so um, I'm asking the board if they would like to waive those fees for the itinerant merchants. In a similar fashion as they do for the mobile food truck, if they have a brick and mortar.
Alright, I would say the consensus would be yes, I'll move it to a vote amended, alright? Um, next is uh, last item, boards slash commissions code amendments, um, so again, uh, the clerk will explain this, but um. I had learned, I believe through the village attorney and maybe others, that um, the term of a board or commission member cannot exceed the term of the elected officials. So since everybody here serves a four-year term, um, that needs to be the max per the law and we have the parks board commissions are a five-year term, so.
Cool, yeah, and we, we realized that when we were posting the vacancy for the park commission. Um, that it was listed as a five-year term, which as the mayor said, um, exceeds the allowed amount through state statute, so. Um, when we were looking at the park commission ordinance, there were a couple of other amendments that may need to be made, um, they have alternate members. In the code, which we haven't utilized for a number of years, um, they have spending authority, which hasn't been um, utilized for a very long time. And um, they have authority over personnel, all in our code, so um, those are some amendments we would consider making when we clean up the term.
I thought, I thought we struck the spending when we did the thing about the residency.
It was.
That was discussed, we never.
Yeah, we need to, yeah, we need to actually pass it, it was discussed and agreed, but I don't think it ever came back for final action.
Okay.
Alright, so, um. Any other business? I forgot we have department reports still, holy cow, alright, department reports, uh, communications.
Good evening, mayor, board, residents. Allies. Um, as, as you know, um, I've assumed the role of the assistant village administrator, so. As you know, I've assumed the role of the assistant village administrator. So with that, I've been trying to not drop anything with communication. So hopefully, especially as we head into the summertime, we've got a lot going on in the village. And I've been working with the local media to publicize some stuff that we have going on. You'll see in tomorrow's newspaper, it went online today, I believe, the fifteen lake story of our new restaurant steakhouse opening downtown. It's exciting to get that coverage because not only does the article talk about the restaurant opening, it talks about us being a great destination for restaurants in general and hopefully it'll turn into a great marketing piece for more restaurants to come downtown. There's also an article I emailed you, I think earlier today or yesterday in the Daily Herald and also the Capital, Capital News Network. They ran a story about Delta Eight restrictions being imposed statewide and they referenced Antioch being the leader in the ordinance that restricted the sale of Delta Eight in the non-home rule community. So it was nice to get that recognition. I'm also working with the folks at the Vegas Restaurant to get them publicity for their fiftieth anniversary coming up May first. There's a ribbon cutting that morning. If you're available, you're all invited. And also I'm working with a couple of other businesses to help increase exposure in local media. As you've seen, our park naming contest or process went live last night. So already we have a couple hundred, almost a couple hundred people that have voted and the voting is online until May fifth. So if you haven't had a chance, please submit your vote and your recommendation that will come before the board. Last week I attended a workshop with FEMA at ABC seven. This was an opportunity for public information officers around the Chicago area to get better network with local TV stations. So it was an opportunity for me to build relationship with Channel Seven to hopefully increase our exposure there for positive news stories in the future. That's about it. Any questions?
Just a quick comment. Everything, I mean, we're communicating everything and I love that. Lately I've seen a couple of them that came out the day of, there was one communication about the street sweeping that came out the day it was starting and there were some comments from residents saying, thanks for the warning, you know, that type of thing. And then I saw about the water, the flushing came out the day that it was starting. I think we need to try to, I know, do our best to try to get out a little bit earlier than the day something's happened, if we can.
I, I agree and I think some of that, some of the contractors that we have involved with that, I think there was some short notice involved, but, but I agree. Thank you.
All right, thank you. What else do we have tonight? Next we have parks.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. My team and I sat with Mark Searle to brainstorm on programming and events at the new park. We also would love some of your input and ideas. But some of the ideas we came up with or programming ideas was yoga in the park, Friday night in the park and it would be a date night with small music duos playing Under the Stars. Probably like every other Friday, duck races in the creek, Chris Kingel Market and Festival of Trees. There are just some of the things we've come up with that would keep us going through the, this year. If you have any ideas, suggestions, we would love to hear them. Also, this weekend is the bike resale. This is one of my favorite recycling help Mother Earth events. It's great to see people drop their bikes off and then come back on Saturday to buy a bigger bike for their child. You know, it is just a flow of bikes going through in and out. Buy small, you know, return it the next year. So drop off is Thursday and Friday with the sale starting at eight AM on Saturday. And then any bikes left or donated are, we call an organization called workingbikes.org and they are, he takes the bikes, refurbishes them and sends them to third world countries. So it's a great recycled event. Staff is gearing up for the Fourth of July parade and as you know, it will be a little different due to the construction. Maritza is on it. Entry applications will be available May one and the park commission did vote on a theme for the parade and it's going to be small town, big hearts. We hope that our floats will come up with some kind of theme-based float. Also, the garden club memorial bench for the Lions Club was installed at Williams Park Lions Pavilion. It looks really nice right behind this sign. So as people enjoy the Williams Park Pavilion, they can sit and have a seat if they didn't bring one. And then under the direction of our new aquatics manager, Allison, she is getting the pool ready. She will be ready by Memorial Day. She is seventy-five percent complete with hiring. The only thing she has left is about fifteen more lifeguards. She's getting a positive response. I give her a lot of credit. She went out to the, her daughters, her daughter plays softball for Barrington and there was, Barrington played Antioch. She was out in the stands recruiting parents to recruit their kids to come work at the pool. So kudos to Allison. The pool will be filled by the first week of May and then they'll be ready to go Memorial Day weekend and then closed for that week and then back open full-time the first of June or that first Saturday in June. Pool passes are on sale, selling all. The first session of swim lessons is almost filled, which starts June eighth. And then pool party rentals are being accepted and those are filling quickly too. So we're really happy to see that. I do have two items for you to think about. This would be something for further discussion later, maybe even at our quarterly meeting. I was contacted by a family in Antioch that wanted to have a memorial tree in the new park. We already have that memorial bench application for the new park also. So it's something, what direction as the board do you want to go with the new park and memorial trees and benches? As people see the process and the progress, they are starting to inquire about it. So I'd really like to be able to give someone concrete answers. So for further discussion, we have to come up with some kind of plan. And then also we had a business approach us about giving sponsorship dollars to the Aqua Center. But in return, they wanted to hang their business logoed banner on one of the, at the fence. So as a board, what, you know, do we want to start tagging our facilities and or, you know, buildings with different logos? So, you know, that's another discussion, what direction we want to go with that for the quarterly meeting maybe. Any questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Public Works?
Good evening. Kind of dovetailing on with Mary's discussion about the pool. Public Works staff has been there and de-winterizing it and doing a lot of maintenance. They've replaced all the valves in the surge tank and some of the equipment maintenance and some touch-up in the pool itself as far as painting and so forth, along with a new chemical feed has been installed for that system. Also, as mentioned, hydrant flushing, we started that Sunday. The, this system flush will be mainly of the main lines. In the fall, we do pretty much the entire system. So this will be a quicker process, hopefully not taking as long. Unfortunately, we did experience water main breaks Monday morning, very early. There was roughly five of them. One we still have to repair. It's a very small lake, but we need to take a tree down because it's basically right underneath the tree. Those water main breaks were caused from the flushing. We had a malfunction of one of the valves where it came loose and it slammed, or at least that's the belief. And with that interruption in the system, it'll cause basically a jamming of water within that main. We can also, it's not uncommon to experience that with flushing hydrant. That's one of the criteria we always yell at the fire department with is shut it nice and slow because if you shut a hydrant real fast, you'll, you'll create that jarring system. So it's not uncommon. Unfortunately, it created a lot of breaks. Residents did have very low water pressure for a long period of time. Crews were out there at six in the morning and clocked out at ten thirty PM that night. And there was basically two crews that were trying to work on different breaks at the same time as they could. So kudos to them. That was a long day and hopefully we can finish flushing without any more breaks. I think it was mentioned maybe at the last meeting briefly, we will be losing a member next week. Actually, I think he is, is employment in May is twenty-two years. So that is very unfortunate. He's here for twenty-two years. Unfortunately, that pay gap was too far to close from a neighboring community. So it's not uncommon from what I understand, a lot of, especially PW who I talk with. They're very aggressive because it's, it's very hard to hire people and they're offering people and taking them from other communities. So it's not the first time that, that I've encountered something similar. Along with that, one of our part-time cleaning staff gave me a letter of resignation today. So we'll be down there. We have three of them. Basically they're part-time individuals that come in from five o'clock in the morning till nine, clean the buildings and so forth. She'll be basically retiring from what I understand. So you will see that job posting along with a PW maintenance worker and hopefully we will advertise in basic qualifications. So maybe we can get somebody that is close to twenty-two years' experience in PW. Along with hiring related, Lee Shannon the fourth works in the wastewater treatment plant and in the water department. We split his time back and forth. He has recently obtained his Class B water license. So the plan is to move him fully into the water department. That's kind of the direction he wants to go in. So we have been interviewing, which like I said, it was kind of planned for the wastewater treatment plant to have possibly an entry level or if we can get experienced and we've done a couple of interviews and hopefully we will have a decision end of this week, next week on who we will submit an offer to. So. Along with employees, we just recently also had an employee. We have three employees that are enrolled in CDL school that's acquired by the federal DOT now. But we had one of them that had completed it. So we have, we had three employees without CDs, CLs. Now we have one and the other two, hopefully within the next month or two will acquire theirs. And then lastly, last week I was, held the pre-construction meeting for Coblen's Phase Four. So you will most likely start or hear about activity on the development of that with the site utilities and the grading and so forth in mid-May to end of May. There's any questions? Happy to answer?
I had one that I should ask earlier. I know this is more money, but can you ask the construction team across the street if they can price out bollards along all of Main Street and all of Orchard since people keep driving their cars into the fence in the park? Just to see what that cost would be. It just concerns me that that's happened at least twice already and who knows how many more times that could happen. In the corner, in the corners, right?
More, more in the corners?
I think we had some in the corners, but I don't think we had them along the main streets, right?
Proposed to be there.
Okay.
Yes, we do have, we do have bollards that are proposed, you know, that will be installed. But yes, they're mainly around the corner of the property.
Not along the, not along the road, but more I think at the corner of, like just where the clock tower is and where the park is. But along the duration of the street is not really many bollards.
And I can, I can definitely ask that question or request for an estimate. I know we might be able to gather some type of cost because there's already a line item for a bollard to be installed. So at least that'll give us an idea. And then I'll have to, I will also ask the engineers or maybe even HR green, but we may have to be careful because it's I-DOTs right away. I don't know if they'll allow that.
Just some, yeah, just, just let it think of, okay. Question?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Do I have any requests for executive session? What? No? All right. All right. Then do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Motion trustee Bluther, second trustee Berman, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned at nine twenty-six.